Litter Control Committee.
We weren't going to.
No, we were just timed it just right, otherwise Josh was up next.
Yeah, don't let me get behind Josh. So, we're ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You guys recall, I came before you at a work session a while ago to talk about the plight of the Litter Control Committee. And your recommendation was to meet with the Solid Waste Committee, which we did. And from that meeting, we came up with some recommendations. And I thought today we could just talk about those and find out if you guys have questions or items to add to this list of recommendations. I also say that we have Gene Ernst and Ron Rose in attendance. Gene is a member of the committee, has been for a long time, and Ron's our coordinator until the 30th of June, right? We have him until the 30th. So if there's any questions that come up that I can't answer, I'm sure those gentlemen can. So, having said that, hopefully you've had a chance to look at these recommendations.
Your item three, the membership.
That's quite a list.
It's quite a list. And I have you, my first question was actually with five at-large appointments. Have you talked to any potential candidates for that or people that might be interested? And/or, and then the rest of the question is the towns and VDOT. I see you made contact with VDOT, but any others? I mean, I.
I have talked to the sheriff, I did send, I have reached out to VDOT, I have not gotten response. I have spoken to town manager in Gordonsville. I did talk to Debbie about it. She'd be interested to hear more about what our plans are, but it's not disinterested. I have not yet spoken to Mr. Woods with the town of Orange, but I have spoken with Jeff Dotson. One thing I'll say is both towns already participated in this program with DEQ. They receive grant money. It's a fair amount less than what we receive because that grant's based on population and road miles and those kind of things. But I don't even think that necessarily the towns would have to remove themselves from what they're already doing, but they could still be part of what we're trying to do. And again, that list of potential memberships was just kind of an idea that we threw around.
How many members do you currently have?
Pardon?
How many members or how many people are doing it now?
Yeah, could you move to the side currently? There you go.
We have two of the five in the room.
It's actually just one of the five because Ron is the coordinator, is not an official appointed member of the committee. I think we still have the issue of finding five citizens that want to participate. However, in my opinion, with a reform committee with membership from other departments within the county, until we are able to fill those, at least we still have enough people to have a meeting and keep things going and moving in some kind of direction. With what we have right now, I mean, it's been pretty unfair for these two fellows behind me to have to try to do it all.
I think if you add the concept or the charge to beautify as well as do litter pickup, I suspect that there'll be a number of people either from garden clubs or things like that that would be more interested in participating. And I think that if, depending on how the charter reads and what all you can do in that area, I think that that'll, I can think you might get more people willing to volunteer because they're doing more than just, you know, litter control.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's the key is getting, you know, at least a core group that are really enthusiastically supporting the mission and believe in it and all those kinds of things. I mean, it's, the county can't do it by itself, county staff can't do it by themselves. And poor Gene can't do it by himself either. So, you know, I guess the challenge remains to see what size group of people can be pulled together that are, you know, that believe in these functions and want to see them through.
VDOT, where do they stand as far as anything still maintaining the Adopt a Highway program, correct?
Yes, that would still be part of the mission of the, or a component of this committee. And that's the, that's the individual or the department or the part of VDOT that I'd like to see as part of this committee because we do promote that through the litter control. Again, I haven't gotten response from them, but I'll stay after it.
She may have been temporarily reassigned like so many of them have too.
Possibly, yes.
If I could add, I think one of the things when we were talking with the committee and all that, one of the key ingredients to this is having certainly, I don't know how to put this any other way, is folks, that's part of their job duties is to come to this meeting, like the VDOT and schools and some county staff, and that if we could populate the committee also with individuals that may have some time during the late afternoons, this committee would meet periodically in late afternoon, certainly before five o'clock or soon thereafter. And in that way, between kind of the work, the governmental types and the citizens types coming together, might get a better critical mass than meeting at seven o'clock. I think that was one of the challenges of you all getting kind of the all volunteer part of it. We would also work to, Kurt would be kind of the senior person, but we could find perhaps somebody from the existing county staff that would be appropriate to staff this. I mean, they would be responsible for all the agendas and getting all the action items. And we make this more of a formalized committee. And I think we're, Kurt and I have kicked around some ideas and potential ways of doing that without increasing people. I'm not talking about hiring people, I'm just asking, maybe including some additional duties under persons, job duties to staff this. Kurt would be kind of the senior lead and then we'd have somebody to do that, having written on meeting coordination. The other part is with the beautification. If you all recall, in the CIP, we put, I don't know if we put any money in there, I can't, Glenn is not here, for gateway signage to the county. And I think from a tourism, from a marketing, from a brand identification, we have a really good opportunity with a group like this to help with one, coming up with some standardization of signs, finding potential locations, getting corporate sponsorship of those signs for annual maintenance or landscaping and maintenance. And so I think this group could be tasked with that first initiative on county beautification, also with the litter control, you know, the board's interest in working with the jail folks and targeting certain corridors and this may be another body to kind of help with some of that work too. So I see it maybe going beyond this education and outreach to actually get into some more capital side of things with beautification as well as ongoing maintenance.
What would the gateway signage, what would that be about?
If you go into a number of localities, Albemarle has them, any number, and they'll have their signage that says, you know, welcome, but they're much more than welcome. It would probably with the county, incorporate the county's logo, the seal, and it would make a statement that you're actually in Orange County. It's a marketing package.
But that is what President Madison said.
But that has nothing to do with litter. And so my, you know, this is supposed to be a litter control committee.
Well, part of it.
Well, you know, the number one problem, I would say we have in Orange County is all the litter strung up and down the road. And so it seems to me that, I'm all for having gateway signage with some, you know, peonies and whatnot surrounding. Those look nice and they're a nice welcome to the county. If you drive past that and then see nothing but litter alongside the roads, it kind of takes away from the message. So, to me, I mean, the litter committee, when we started it back in the nineties, it was specifically about cutting down on litter. And it seems to me that's what it should do. And I'm not sure the best way we can use the grant money to do that. But to me, that's a very basic fact that that's our biggest problem. So we need to fix that before we get into anything else.
Well, we can't fix it because there is no, the community interest in doing anything about it is gone. People want to complain about it, but people, as you can tell, we have one active member on the litter control committee.
We've been recruiting the litter control committee for years.
Right, we don't have the people to get out there and do the work and promote everything. So we're trying to rebrand it where incorporates some other things in it. I mean, personally, I'd like to just go down and find.
The litter committee was no good at controlling litter, so we're going to repurpose it.
Well, the idea is that if you've got something beyond just litter control, you might get other people interested if we're talking beautification. If somebody can come out and say, well, what can we do to improve the looks of the county?
How much is the grant? How much is the grant?
It is from eight thousand and twelve thousand dollars.
One thing I'll say is, and I mentioned, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say it's very limited what that grant money can be used for.
Correct, the grant funds would not, the beautification part of it wouldn't be eligible for grant funds. So that would just be a component of this committee that maybe would attract some folks and get some things done, but it wasn't, it wouldn't be funded by the grant.
My response is the committee was drawn up to be a litter control committee. And for whatever reason, I'm not casting aspersions upon anybody, but over the years it has withered on the vine and we're not, it's not working. And I, to me, my simple-minded way of looking at things, I don't see how broadening the scope of the committee is going to make things better.
I feel like one of the aspects that we've got now that we haven't had since I've been around is the workforce, working force.
Yep, that's excellent, yes.
That's been a huge break for, that's happened really in the past year. And I get an email at least twice a month where they're out picking up roadway. Where it's been a struggle to get citizens to do that. It's been a struggle to get the Adopt a Highway folks to do that. People are adopting a highway so they can have a sign on the road with their business for their own personal advertising, not because they want to not pick up trash. But now that we've got the workforce doing a good service for us, whether it's on our roadways or at parks or the places that they're working for us, it's been a huge help. So that aspect of it is making a big difference.
Can we use their funds directly for that?
It can be, absolutely.
And each crew can do, what, three miles of road a day roughly? And that's on one side of the road, so.
We only have one crew.
Right, that's what I was going to say, is if we look towards.
I think they have two crews, but they're not in the same county at the same time. They're right outside.
That's right, yeah.
They only get about eighty bags worth of, in one outing, it's eighty some bags a trip, right?
Bags go up awful fast.
Right, part of it is getting people to change the culture a little bit because quite honestly, since McDonald's and Sheetz have gone in at three and twenty, that has become a dump. And they're already charged for that, but I'd like to see them get fined more so. I mean, they're not, they are not taking care of it. There's been no effort to instill pride in those people in the area that they work in and everything. Figured maybe if we could, you know, jumpstart it a little bit and get people, you ride down to Lake Anna and as you enter the Lake Anna area, they have signs up, you know? Help protect Lake Anna, keep it pretty, you know, don't litter and everything. And it seems to be working.
You say that the Adopt a Highway, there are groups that just don't meet their commitment?
Absolutely, if you talk to Veronica, she's in charge of the DQ, or VDOT. And they've made, they've restructured their criteria for Adopt a Highway simply because of that. So it's not just as easy as filling out a paperwork calendar or some of these things too, because that's what they found.
Well, again, I mean, and what Kurt said about, you know, this litter control committee money can't be used for the beautification. So I'm, again, I'm, you know, from where I'm sitting, I think we need to focus on, I think it's fine for Public Works and Tourism to be involved in some gateway beautification. But that doesn't solve our central problem, which is litter, which is what the Litter Control Committee is supposed to be about. So I think we need to, I think we need to try to figure out how we're going to actually get litter from off the side of the road, particularly the main road.
Any suggestions?
Well, that's what I said, I think we're going to have to figure that out. And I don't claim to have an answer to it, but I mean, maybe that's, that should be the, I mean, we're using the workforce, but we only get them so much.
Well, I think we need to work both ends of it. I mean, I saw something a month ago now, two people in a car driving down, it's happened to be twenty, and I guess they finished their McDonald's thing or whatever it was at the same time. Windows came down and out it went. And I couldn't see enough to, I think, I think they were relatively young, but I couldn't even tell if they were male or female. But I thought, heavens, I mean, they have no clue as to what that's doing? And so there's a, there's a problem on the front end of creating the stuff in the first place in addition to the problem of, you know, picking it up. I don't have a solution either. I mean, I remember signs used to be all over the highways, you know, threatening fines of two hundred and fifty bucks or whatever it was at the time. But I don't know that, it'd be interesting to see if we ever issued a citation for that.
Well, I think there's a lot, yeah, I mean, I think, and that's where we bring the schools in and that would be, that's certainly a good place to start. There's a lot to be done all the way around on this, I'm just not sure that I understand why we would try to bring that all under the Litter Control Committee.
It's not bringing it under the Litter Control Committee, it's expanding the scope of a program to have both Litter Control Committee and a Beautification Committee. One thing, we only have, I believe, three county entrance signs.
Both ends of Route Three.
Right, that's two of them, and I thought that they had a third one. The price on these things was prohibitive.
Yeah, somebody looked at that a couple of years ago. There was a committee, there was a committee that actually looked at it.
Well, the Tourist Advisory Committee has been promoting this. I mean, they see that as useful to them, identifying, you know, you're now in Orange County and this is the home of President Madison.
And if we start at the entrances to the county, hopefully it will make a difference of people traveling through the county. That's one of the big problems we have. We have our own people littering, but we have such a volume of through traffic that when you come into someplace that's already piled up with trash, the mindset seems to be, let's just throw more trash on it.
Right, which is why I think we need to tackle litter problem first and foremost.
I might be out of line in saying this, but I think the conversation that's happening right now really is parts of an agenda of a Litter Control Committee talking about what we should do. I think the purpose was, is to how, what are we going to form as a new Litter Control Committee? Because what we've got right now is not working and I'm leaving. So I think what we've proposed is, what Mr. David talked about and Kurt talked about, is formulating a committee that's got people that have vested interests because that's part of their job as well as citizens. Get those folks together and not meet once a month, but maybe meet every other month and have an agenda of things like we're talking about and have ideas as opposed to just an idea. I think that's what we're looking for is to, how can we form that committee? And can we, can we make, not require, but reach out to the police department, the sheriff's department, reach out to VDOT and really form a committee where we haven't had that in probably about six, eight months. Not what's going to be on the agenda once we have that committee, because that's what we're talking about now, the beautification and picking up the trash. And that's where the ideas come together and working with the schools and educating. Because that's what, that's what we do behind the scenes. We meet with the schools and we meet with the Boys and Girls Club and we give demonstrations and we go to, we do seminars and we go to the town events and the county events and talk about those things. Those things are already happening, but I think what we're trying to do is form a committee and how do we go about doing that?
And I think when we were kicking this around the other night, the group of us, the beautification, and I'll claim some of the responsibility for putting it out and the intent was just try to gin up more excitement about beautification, about gateway signages, because I know that was on a parallel track. There's also an ability to make this too broad. And I, Mr. Johnson, I think you're making that point that it's been focused on litter control. We have other ways of getting at the gateway signage and getting it designed and placed and financed, but there's an ongoing maintenance function to that, make sure that it's not littered, it's maintained. And so that may be something to hand off to this committee and using other avenues to the Tourism Advisory Committee, the board, I mean, to get the designs down and locations nailed down and the sponsorships. But then the Litter Committee is more of a coordinating and operations side of these sides. So I don't, there may be other ways of getting toward the signage piece, but keeping them focused on litter and maybe in this reconstituted thing where it becomes more of a, every other month, you've got local government types, VDOT, coming as well as interested citizens, continuing with the programming, the education and the outreach and then maybe working with individual road segments that the jail crews are able to do. There may be an opportunity for us to look at the next budget cycle to see if there's additional dollars that the board may want to redirect and put towards additional resources being brought. There are a lot of communities I know in the state that are actually funding dedicated road crews with equipment and transportation that goes to their regional jail, picks them up in the morning and then goes and rotates completely through the community. So there's some communities, some examples. And that's not without cost, I don't want to say that this is free. But using inmate workforces to attack litter or roadside litter cleanup is something that's.
I think that where I, what you're headed toward, I think, is something that might be a logical next step. Rather than take the leap of faith to forming or reforming a committee, maybe what we need to do is find a way of getting a group together, hopefully not too unwieldy a group, but a group together to sort of talk about this from its various perspectives. I suspect there's some really good resources out there that can be used in, and maybe some already are in high schools and places like that to help work the front end. There's probably some things that VDOT and even the sheriff's department can do. We have the crew with the jail and there's some volunteer organizations. I mean, it, you know, getting a dozen people to, because this is where the Tourism Advisory Committee got started. You had about a dozen people that were really interested in the subject of tourism in that case. I think we could find a dozen people, including staff, that would want to take on the subject of, why do we litter in the first place? And how do we deal with that? As well as, as you move down the pipe, at some point, somebody's got to clean it up. And have that conversation and see, okay, what do we need? Do we need a committee at all? Is it, can it only be done with, you know, staff resources or how to go about it? I think that, I don't know that we know enough at this point to really define the scope. I like some of the things you talk about there in terms of the education and promoting the proper disposal and recycling and all of those kinds of things. But that's just a piece of it as well. I mean, at some point, we ought to be able to find resources that exist. Somebody has got to have made, you know, hundreds of hours of YouTube videos about why you shouldn't throw your McDonald's cup out the window. And we could start seeing if that can have an impact. As well as having the resources available such as maybe expanding the workforce through other means where there's, you know, in addition to the two crews, maybe, based on the expansion that the jail's doing, I'd say you could probably put together more than two crews with the number, with the population that's available there, if there was a way of doing it. I mean, I, a conversation or a couple, and I think you guys started it the other night.
If we look, if we look at the people he's got listed here, we're not, other than the at-large citizens, these people, I mean, they all have a job and we can tie that job to litter control. So getting those people together and discussing options using resources. And where, if we can get citizen volunteers, continue to try to recruit them. The whole idea of the beautification was, that was, I thought, something where people who are not interested in litter control might be interested in beautification and we might get participation that we're not getting today. So if we don't, if we don't try to expand that scope, get together with this group that he's got listed and any volunteers that want to stick with just that litter control function and see what we come up with in terms of ideas. Whether it says, okay, county, you need to increase your budget by this much to pay for this many road crews or whatever. I mean, that may be, that may be the kind of stuff that comes out of it.
See, I know if they're ahead with the road crews cost us, with that, because I know the county's paid the jail. Although we paid the jail something.
Glenn is not in here.
Yeah.
We pay.
That is, I mean, we.
You got to pay for the guard and the medical.
You know, one way or another, however you look at it, I'm not saying we, it's, you know, it's, there is a cost, you know, because there is a cost tied to it.
I jumped quickly to the goose egg, no, you're right.
And I thought, I thought it was actually a billing rate. In my time on the jail board, I thought there was a billing rate.
I'm not sure exactly how it's done, but, and that was one of the things we wanted was funding to stay in the budget because they were talking about cutting that funding out, so.
Right, and it may be beneficial for us to have a dedicated crew for the county.
Well, I think that's something we should look at.
And that's what I, I mean, there are a lot of communities will actually fund all the power equipment, the trailers, and actually the, either deputies or pay for the jailers and they'll come by in the morning, pick them up and they'll have, the kitchen will make them lunches and they'll go out and they'll be out on the roads all day.
Having a resource like that available to a committee would, I think, would help get people interested because then it can do something, then it has the ability to actually get work done and.
We might want to have somebody from the jail on this committee because they would be understanding their function and how that would work.
And I think, I kind of think there's something positive to getting the inhabitants of the jail out of their cell and out in the fresh air and doing something. Somewhere along the line, that's got to do something to it.
Those guys make pride in what they do, they truly do.
A lot of them enjoy getting out because they are able to get outside, you know, on a recurring basis. So it's a great desire.
Okay.
Well, I think we have some direction, let me kind of restate what I.
Why don't we try assembling the group that you have mentioned here as a group to begin? And we get some more information with regard to the jail and any cost to us, there's no cost to us. Or any options for staffing a, you know, a truck or a trailer or people to work with them. And I, you still need a guard to go with them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I would also like to have here the results of a conversation about the enforcement side too, whether that involves the town police as well as the sheriff and state police. I'm not sure exactly what the enforcement.
Well, you got to catch them. And they have to catch them. You can't just call up and go, they did it.
No, no, I understand that.
That doesn't do any good. Even if they leave paperwork in there that says who did it.
But is it, or, you know, is it a priority for any of the enforcement organizations now? I mean, it could be that they are, they spend all the resources and time they have to other offenses. That wouldn't surprise me.
Well, you think about what the fine is, it's minimal. And why, it doesn't justify their effort. Then you multiply that fine by ten times.
Then you multiply that fine by ten times.
Well, I remember, I I mean, I I can recall as a kid growing up, this admittedly was, I think, in North Carolina is the part I remember. It was two hundred and fifty dollars, and if and if you were, and the sign said that. And if you were caught a second time, it was, it doubled and then doubled again. And so I don't know if it worked, I just remembered the signs, but.
We can't put a tax on bottles and cups and paper, can we? Plastic bags.
Return it to McDonald's, they get their.
Is there a state?
I I would like to try to get the Navy Legislature to do a bag.
What was the name of the of the man who introduced the bottle bill every year?
Madison Murray. I mean.
Well, I'm not, I'm not.
Every year.
Big on local ordinance, but I guess I guess the question to you, Tom, is is there any authority that local government has over these matters in terms of ordinances and the like?
We we can have a literal ordinance. I'm I'm looking right now to see what the maximum penalty is, because I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but we can have a literal ordinance.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, that's something that this group could.
Well, that's if you, and and that's sort of what I envision. If you if you go down, if you just simply make a list of topics, there's probably twenty-five different topics that 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 could be discussed by people who are who have an interest and and some expertise.
And it may be if we take this group and start off with it and then cook it down and reduce it to a finite.
There's a piece that hasn't been discussed that goes on, and that is our electronics, hazardous waste and shredding events, and that needs to be also as important. It's not that the roadside is not important, it is, but we need participation more into these, there's recycling events.
Well, that's what I said, there there's a list of probably twenty or twenty-five topics that that.
So you're just one, and this roadside is.
Yeah, that's just one piece of it.
Well, that that's the most obvious one that you.
Yeah, picking up the electronics and the and the hazardous waste, I I know the county really appreciates that as a as a function, and I get a lot of good compliments about that, those those things that we do.
We find those at the recycling bins, too.
What's that?
You'll find those at the recycling bins.
And and I I guess I would say that, you know, as the as the one who's who's been kind of the negative ned here, I mean, I don't have a problem with them proceeding on in this in this vein and seeing what they come up with.
He's asked for, they recommend including one supervisor.
I'll do it, I I.
Well, the other thing I'm thinking is, is there is there a standing group that we have? Like, the Tourism Advisory Committee had a a basic group of citizens to that were sort of part of the county infrastructure to.
Well, you've got the, you've got the tourism department, you have the moor that's.
But I'm, but I'm trying, I'm, I keep thinking about organizations like ODA, which is probably not the right one for this, but is there any any of our?
Our, the kind of the allied organization.
Yeah.
I think the Litter Control Committee kind of came out because of the state grant, and you need to have this as as a qualification to receive the state grant. We don't need the committee.
No, we we can still get the grant without the committee.
Through just county staff, like any other grant that we would need.
I would think the chamber would be interested because.
Perhaps one of the ways to to kind of get this maybe going is that if with Mr. Crozier's participation and as many of these other folks, because we have two willing citizens right here.
Oh.
That that that.
One.
One, one, well, I've I've missed a bit, but that, let's get current, let's try to get this group kind of formulated, and then for them to kind of explore what's going on now, and the electronics recycling, shredding, the outreach, the the education piece, and then what are some other things that might be, might be available to to them from an education piece, but also from this roadside litter crew? Because I I think it would be interesting to for them to to work through, okay, what would it actually take in far as costs to the county to amp up to a certain degree this roadside litter with the, through the jail and and come back as part of the budget cycle to to see what.
I I would also add to the list the Adopt a Highway program, is that, is it or is it not working?
I'm thinking the Adopt a Highway, go out recruiting people to do it, and recognizing those that do, you know, if nothing else, a a list of the Adopt a Highways and the top ten or five, how many, of how well they keep it clean and and getting recognition for that. I mean, I think that would be a something that so that would encourage the Adopt a Highway program to get a little more commitment to it.
And and the other thing to add is, is there anything, whether the county should or shouldn't, the ordinance laws? Is there any enforcement mechanism that through the Sheriff's Office and the Commonwealth's Attorney to be able to to do that? And I think this laundry list of 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 things could then come back to the board, and you all could work through as a matter of policy, as a matter of budget or or.
And I think you also have to differentiate between primary and secondary roads, because, you know, I I told you what I saw on twenty, I I can't imagine going out there and trying to pick up, I mean, you might be able to do it in the middle of the night, but no other time would be safe to even.
Well, they don't get as much traffic, they maybe don't get as much. And I and I and you and you go past some homes that people have, you know, they keep theirs looking pretty nice just because it's their home.
Well, you get to some of the secondary roads that don't get mowed anymore.
You can't even see the trash.
But when, but when they finally do.
I know, I know.
When the time gets here, and it rains, and.
Yeah. If I may, the question I have from a practical standpoint is, come June thirtieth, Ron's no longer the coordinator, that leaves, Mr. Ernst as the sole member of this committee, what we're talking about here today, I I fully support and understand, but it's going to take some time. My question is, what do we do with this committee of one? We advertise on the web, we have monthly meetings, that all seems a little bit silly, to be honest. So do we dissolve the committee until we come up with what we're doing in the future? Suspend it, I I don't, I don't know.
What what if the board would just act today to reconstitute this committee effective July first, based on the membership categories that were in there, and that we will do the best that we can to populate those with those categories, but that it doesn't, will take not all of them being filled in order for the committee to convene? And the second thing is, is that with you all's okay and understanding, as long as it's budget neutral, I could perhaps find a a county employee, existing county staff person to handle the staffing of this committee with the agendas and and that, and Kirk can kind of be in an oversight role.
Does that, does that mean that Gene remains a member of the committee?
He can be one of the, he can be one of the citizen at-larges, so we only have four to five.
He can be the big cheese, he'll be the only cheese left.
He can be the marxist.
Assuming that he desires to.
Thank you. Thank you for willing to be willing to.
I I just called up the list of committees and commissions and and things that we have, and, you know, there's something called the Community Policy and Management Team, which I've never heard of.
That's the C, that's the Comprehensive Services.
Uh, and and it goes all the way down to Youth Commission, Youth Council, and so forth. There must be some combination of groups in there that would at least be willing to, you know, be be part of a conversation, you know, sir, give them a cup of coffee or something, and you you might be able to, from these groups, get somebody to to help that start the conversation.
I think that, like the Youth Council, I think that would be a ready-go-to group to see if there's anybody interested in representing them on the committee, but if if you all are comfortable enough, and this is some latitude, this is the target population of folks who'd be on this committee that we would invite. If you have any citizens that may have inter- interest in it, fine, but we'll we'll start moving forward with this and and try to start getting some excitement and some interest, and then coming back to you on what the what the work is.
Well, I don't know if it'll work for anybody else, but it hasn't worked for me. People come up and complain to me about litter, and I say, I've got a vacancy on the Litter Control Committee, and.
They say, fill it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good at complaining, not good at volunteering.
So so if one, if I may add one more bit of information to to set some target dates, we need to make the application for next year's grant by June thirtieth, correct? We'll we'll have that done, it's not a big issue. Generally, the grants are issued, we we usually get the money around October sometime. So to me, the dates that are important from the grant standpoint is to get the application in by the deadline. Then we have to do some reporting in July, I think, August first of what we use the money for this past year. And then assuming that all that goes through, we get the grant in October. So come October, somebody has to make, start making decisions on how we spend that money. So in my mind, that's kind of, by October, November, we need to have some kind of group together so that.
Well, I mean, if you start with this group and come up with some ideas, they may, that may also help formulate what you actually want as a a a continuing group.
Okay.
I mean, the sheriff said, yeah, I don't want to be there all quarterly, or or somebody else will say, I don't want it. I mean, you you begin to see what contributions the different organizations here can make in in the early discussions, and that maybe can help to find your committee in more detail.
And if I remember, Ron, you were saying that a lot of the the expenses that were done in prior years are ones that we probably continue on at least for the next next cycle, just so we, what we're doing, you know, it's all right to maybe continue to do some of that again before we kind of get our seat legs on this this committee.
And and I and I agree with that. I guess the point I was trying to make is somebody has to make the decision on what what we're spending it on.
Well, I think.
And and assuming or or say that it takes longer than we think to formulate this group, my question's going to be, who's going to decide that?
I think we'll, I mean, Mr. Hiller Grant, myself, and Mr. Crozier.
Absolutely, and I'm sure Mr. Ernst wouldn't mind participating in it.
All right, we got, we got some guidance here, we got one more work item that we already deferred once.
So if the board would just take action now to go ahead and authorize us to re-reconstitute the Litter Control Committee as.
You need a motion?
Yes, sir, and that we go ahead and authorize us to apply for the grant and to, and we'll accept the progr- the grant on the next side of the the annual fiscal year. That should be enough, that way the minutes reflect what we all do.
Okay.
That was a rambling way of getting there, and Mr. Crozier's been.
Yes, one question, do we need that during the work session or during our regular?
Your work session, you can take.
You can take action in a work session, state law doesn't distinguish.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries ahead.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing, too, I I looked it up while y'all were talking. We can't pass a local ordinance, minimum fine of two fifty, maximum fine of twenty-five hundred for littering on our highway, so we do have that authority from the General Assembly to set, and and it's actually a class one misdemeanor, you can get jail time for it.
And then you could go work on it.
Or, well, and here's the, here's what the state code says, or by ordinance, you can say that the judge can give them community service, ten hours of community service cleaning roads instead. So we do have those tools available, a a minimum fine of twenty, two hundred and fifty dollars, and this potential ten hours of community service, so just.
Yeah, but two two fifty, you get people just write the check and go away.
Well, that's the minimum, that's the minimum.
Right.
You can make it twenty-five hundred if you want.
If you make it more, people will go spend ten hours.
First, if there was a, if you come into the town, fined for letting two hundred and twenty-five hundred dollars, you think that might help?
If we enforce it, if you enforce it and get a reputation for enforcing it.
All we need to do is enforce it once or twice.
Yeah, if you get a reputation for enforcing it.
And I I'm sure that 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 we could get some help from the Sheriff's Department on enforcement, as long as we're willing to put some, put some money in there to to fund a.
Well, I mean, if you think about it in reality, we're paying, we're paying. Paying for it. Jail force to come out and do it.
Yes, exactly.
So all we're doing is recouping from those people creating the need.
All right.
I think that's a user tax.
Josh.
Can I ask one thing before we start with Josh? Is that, since I know we won't finish this, can we dedicate the whole next one to him so he can actually?
Well, can he at least be first on the agenda?
Right, yes. Yes, sir.
I mean, the farther we kick this, the less work I have, so I'm okay. Board members, you have a memo in your packet. By no means an exhaustive memo, but it does outline some some potential text amendments that I've been gathering over probably the past two years or so. Some things are more major text amendments, like the telecommunications tower ordinance or the cluster housing development ordinance, both need to be looked at. We have some other smaller amendments, too, that are, I don't think really warrant bringing to you individually, but I think we could lump together into.
If you were to prioritize these, how would you prioritize them? As you've, as you've list listed them in your memo, or have you got a different priority?
I have two. The first one I want to really tackle is the parking ordinance.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that that supplementary district reg.
Yeah, those those are really, for lack of a better phrase, stuck in my craw since I started here. They're really bad. And I I'll give you a really good example. The way the ordinance currently reads for Dollar General, the one that was recently approved for the rezoning in Unionville, based on the size of that store, ordinance requires forty-six parking spaces. Dollar General only needs thirty-three at the most. I was able to work with them somewhat based on net square footage, but it's still well over what they needed. And that's a common thread that you'll notice with a lot of retail stores and other uses. We just require an inordinate amount of parking to what they actually need as a business or as a use. So I would really like to to address that first.
And it applies not just to commercial enterprises. I have a situation in my district now with a church wanting to do an expansion. Can't afford to do it because they can't afford a stormwater management system, because they can't afford to increase the parking spaces to the number that's required in the ordinance.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it it's a big.
Okay, so so the supplementary district regulations, you'd say is number one, okay? What would be number two?
Number two would be the rezoning and SUP submittal requirements. And a- as I indicated in my memo, or that that same reference to application of rezoning last year kind of highlighted why we need to address this. A lot of other counties, municipalities, they specifically say in an ordinance what you have to submit to constitute a complete application for rezoning or an SUP. We don't, and as that application really showed with BDOT in particular, that's a lot of ambiguity, and it really hurts us in the long run. So that would be the second one I'd like to address.
Okay, next.
I don't know if I want to say subdivision policies yet.
I I think the cluster zoning one needs to be addressed. We we have some statutory requirements to have a cluster zoning ordinance, and ours is meaningless.
That one probably is is not as expansive.
You want more than three? Yeah, I was gonna say, that sounds like a good place to start.
So is that the three of them to get started on? Is that enough to get you, get you moving and you and you can come back later when you decide that you're ready to handle more, or do you want to handle all the, all of them at once?
What about the the telecommunications towers? That's something to deal with more and more. Is that, do you see, because I don't know how much we're out of whack here, is that something that's fairly high or something of a priority?
Probably the middle. One thing I want to do is to make it more easy for us to permit wireless internet. That's already an option in a lot of areas of the county, particularly District Five, District Four. But there's a lot of areas that just won't ever get broadband, they just don't have the density to, for Verizon or AT&T to extend lines. So I think it's important to have an ordinance that actually accommodates wireless internet, we don't. Right now, they have to work under an amateur radio provision that's old, from the nineties.
So we make that one number four?
But that would be a fairly, it seems to me that would be a fairly simple one to do. Simple in the sense of not being controversial, I mean, it sounds like it just needs to be tweaked to to update it fifteen years.
It it would. I I would take it upon myself, just because that ordinance has not been looked at in fifteen years, to go ahead and just look at the whole thing. There's organizations out there that have model ordinances that we would reference. I think that's actually what they did for the original ordinance, so just little things, but no, I think generally you're right. It would be a pretty easy amendment.
You want any more prioritization?
One thing I would like to add, maybe we could include it in one of these, it'd be the third one on the list, essentially duplexes and accessory apartments in R two. Somehow they got left out. Essentially duplexes and accessory apartments in R two. Um, somehow they got left out. Uh, it's the only residential district that doesn't have those uses in it, and I, I would like to see those added in there.
So, that truly is just a text amendment from, is that what you?
Yeah, it's one of those simple ones I didn't want to bring to you just for it, because it'd be kind of a, a waste of money and advertising costs, or an inefficient use of money, I should say.
Well, that seems like it's something to keep you busy for a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's five, so...
I think I'm good.
Okay. And when you get these done, you can come back with another list. Or, as you're moving through. Uh, Tom, are there any, any of these that you've looked at that, uh, are things we need to get in, in, uh, in alignment with state law?
Well, that's why I brought up the cluster one, because pursuant to state law, we're supposed to have a cluster ordinance. We, we have one, but no one would ever use it. Because we have two acre by right, and so there's...
We had to, because we had to have one.
And so I think we need to get a legitimate cluster ordinance.
That's the only, that's the only one that we need to work in from that standpoint?
It's the only one I saw on his list that, that media listed, and typically we get this resolved on that.
Okay, Josh. Do you have anything more you want to talk about?
Nope, not this time.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you for waiting around.
No problem.
Both sides.
All right. We got a six-minute break until we start our regular meeting.
Sounds good. I wanted to stand up anyway.
Aye.
Let's call a meeting order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yesterday was Memorial Day.
Dear Heavenly Father, we remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms we enjoy every day, and how they have followed your guidance in serving people everywhere. Please bless their families and ease the pain of loved ones lost. Please hold our servicemen and women of today in your strong arms. Cover them with your sheltering grace and your presence as they serve throughout the world for our protection. May they be supplied with courage in face of each day, and may they trust in your mighty power to accomplish each task. We also ask for your blessings on the family of those serving, and fill their lives and homes with peace, provision, and strength. And finally, Lord, keep us all ever mindful of the ongoing sacrifices of our servicemen and women and their families are making every day, and our responsi- our responsibility to give them our love and support. Amen.
Okay. The adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or hearing none? Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
And a motion, a second? And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Uh, next is the special presentation and appearances from the Orange, Orange Downtown Alliance Edible Fest. Jeff Curtis.
Thank you, gentlemen and lady, for allowing me this, uh, short presentation before you. I believe you've seen a letter, uh, I've, I've forwarded to everybody, a short introduction about our edible festival. Uh, this is one of the festivals we bring to town. It is our largest and most comprehensive festival, uh, that we are able to bring to the town of Orange. The purpose of the festival really is to allow an educational, family-centered event to come to the town, uh, to bring visitors to the town, visitors to the county who may not have had a chance to visit Orange and all of our assets. This will be our fourth festival this year. Uh, last year and in two thousand twelve, we were able to receive a Virginia Tourism Grant in the amount of five thousand dollars, which in itself is rather unheard of to receive, to be the recipient of the same grant two years in a row. We are not eligible for that grant. Again, this year, it's an every other year application. This is a rather expensive festival to put on. Uh, over the last four year, oh, last three years, we're probably looking at close to fifty thousand dollars a festival. A lot of that going to rentals, to, uh, paying, uh, advertising, media support, um, uh, um, custom hiring. We have fallen a little bit into a situation of a challenge with our budget raising, our fundraising this year. That five thousand dollars we won't be receiving from Virginia Tourism gives us a little bit of a gap. All of our efforts on fundraising have fallen short about five to six thousand dollars. I'm here to ask the county's consideration of helping us fill up that gap, so we will be able to go forward with the fourth year of this festival. This is a one-time request. This is just to, uh, to put our festival on the ground again this year, and after this year, we will, we will do some serious, uh, evaluating to see if the sponsorship is out there to continue it in its fifth year.
Any questions for, uh?
Mr. Curtis?
Yes, sir.
I have one concern, which was that, that last year at your festival, there were some folks there who were supporting a particular political candidate, and they were treated rather high-handedly and rather roughly, and actually word has kind of gone out across the state from that about what a bunch of buffoons, the, the folks who were in Orange, for, for treating them like that, because they really weren't, they were just kind of standing back with some signs and t-shirts. Do we have your assurance that that sort of thing won't happen again?
We were, we were, I understand the situation, and it, it has been a, a serious situation with us. We, we understand the situation, and yes, you, you have our assurance. We were caught a little blindsided with that, and, and, uh, preparation for that would have, uh, uh, would have helped prevent, and we could have offered a much more gracious welcome to those folks. I have some very zealous volunteers on, on the ground that day who, who I think hold the festival very dear to their hearts and, uh, maybe a little bit overprotective. But yes, sir, you have, you have our assurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Make a motion if we approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, uh, appropriate five thousand dollars to the Orange County, Orange Downtown Alliance for the Edible Fest. A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I assume your, your motion is, has the, the one-time tag associated with it, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right. Public comment. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We currently have two speakers. The first is Bill Speeden, one-two-zero-four-six, Blue Hill Drive.
All right.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for your efforts for the county. I'm representing the Farm Bureau today as, uh, the Legislative Director. And this is a letter I'm presenting to you, uh, an open letter to Dominion from the Orange County Farm Bureau concerning potential new electric lines in Orange County. And the letter reads, "As farmers and landowners, the Board of Directors of the Orange County Farm Bureau respectively requests you to reconsider this project," not you, this is directed to Dominion, "including its proposed routes, which involve permanent and severe negative impacts on miles of pristine farmland in Orange County and surrounding counties. We further ask that you consider one of the many alternative plans which have been proposed to solve the electrical reliability problem at Pratt's, which does not even involve the need for a new right-of-way at all. The lands affected by your proposed project contain some of the finest and most sold-after fo- farming soils in Virginia. Therefore, please support the following priorities. One, follow existing right-to-way where possible, protecting view, viewscapes, our tourist industry, and farmer-safe farming practices. Two, construct lines on a new right-of-way only after thorough studies of alternative methods have been exhausted, and only as a last resort for future needs. Three, design the lines to cross the latest invasive areas as directed by current non-farming uses such as industrial, commercial areas where possible. We further request that you put yourselves in our position and look hard at the short-time window you have given our county to study and respond to your announcement of this project before you act on your present plan to file a permit application of the State Corporation Commission by the end of spring. We ask that if you cannot return to the drawing board to eliminate the construction of the new east-west lines over new right-of-ways, at least provide our county government and activist groups the courtesy of having until December thirty-first, twenty fifteen, to further investigate alternative ways to work together with you for an amiable solution to all. Signed, respectively Jake Plum, President, Orange County Farm Bureau." So, we would ask that, uh, uh, you pass these sentiments on, uh, to appropriate bodies would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Um, next speaker is Bob Willbanks, nine-one-four-zero, Raffigan Road.
Thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, friends and neighbors. Uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of the O M C Alliance, uh, also in reference to the Virginia Dominion Power Transmission Plan.
But, Mr. Willbanks, could you, uh?
Sir?
Get in front of the building so that, yeah, so that the cameras catch you.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I've only been here a couple of times in eight years, and I really, uh, don't really even come in at all, and I can actually give you my word. As soon as the power lines over with, one way or the other, you won't see me again for many years, so, uh. First, um, uh, the main reason I'm here to talk to you fellows, and it's all in the letter, and I'd basically just like to read it to you. And if you have any questions, interrupt me along the way, and I'll try to answer them. If I don't know the answer, I'll get them. But I'm here basically to request you fellows to consider an amendment to our Orange County Comprehensive Master Plan, and I want to back that, that's in accordance with Virginia Statute fifteen point two dash two-two-two-three, C, Section nine, designation of specific corridors for routes for electric transmission lines of a hundred and fifty kilovolts or more in Orange County. In two thousand seven, our legislature passed a statute saying that counties in Virginia could decide where to put electric transmission lines. They didn't take out billboards. They didn't send emails. They didn't even send letters, most likely, and counties didn't know that. As we were doing our master plans, redoing our master plans, jumping through all the hoops to the master plans, we didn't know it. And if you didn't know it, you couldn't act on it. You couldn't have it in place. That being said, it is there, and it is in place, and, uh, to go on there, you know, we thank you guys for the attention that you provided to the O M C Alliance when we were here on the agenda behind Dominion Virginia Power at our last meeting. We also thank you for the letter that you wrote requesting Dominion to slow down their process for the selection of a route for the installation of the new two-thirty KV line in Orange County. It's obvious the industrial transmission lines and supporting structures will cause a decrease in property values, a disruption of land use activities, an impediment to existing farming practices, and an injury to both the overall scenic quality and potential tourism of Orange County. As our Board of Supervisors, you've got the authority, in accordance with the statute referenced above, to amend our Comprehensive Master Plan. Our Alliance respectively requests you consider such amendment as soon as possible. As Dominion's plans, they have at the present time is to have this project permitted to the State Corporation Commission in a matter of weeks now. This is going to be over with before summer, like a steamroller. They've been working on it since two thousand thirteen, and we've had since the week before Easter. Came in on a religious holiday. We respect the endless hours and the thought process and work that our planning commission and the Board of Supervisors spent completing our existing Comprehensive Master Plan. This letter is not written as a request to reinvent the wheel, but to ask the Board to add a simple, short amendment containing language which blocks the construction of new transmission lines over a hundred and fifty kilovolts, which require condemnation of new right-of-ways for construction except by special use permit. If you consider this request and decide to act quickly ahead of Dominion's permit application, you'll send them back to the drawing board. This is our hope, because as you may recall from our earlier presentation, there were sixteen methods, Mr. Speeden just mentioned them, proposed to solve their issues, four of which did not even include the new east-west lines across Orange County. Further, it might even prevent another group of farmers and landowners from having to go through this same exercise two, four, ten years from now to confront this type of problem again. Our Alliance has got a member who's better versed in the specifics of the amendment, who's been working on an amendment for Madison County. I'll be happy to forward you his draft to my supervisor, and he can get it to the rest of you, or gladly forward you his contact information if you want to speak with him directly. And until then, you just have my deepest appreciation for anything that you have done and can do to help keep this thing out of our end to Orange County. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Willbanks? All right. Thank you for your, uh, your well-expressed presentation. All right. Next, uh, any, any further speakers?
Next, sir.
All right. Uh, next item is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Second.
I did, I, I'm, I'm...
Teal moved it.
Oh, Teal moved it, I'm sorry. All right, I have a motion, uh, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Department Director Constitutional Officer reports, Clark Mountain Generator Replacement, Nicola Tidy.
Staying in shape's tough, isn't it, Nicky?
It is. It is too much exercise. Uh, good evening, um, Chairman of the Board, members of the Board. Uh, I'm here to give you an update. I think I did brief you once we lost, um, power up at the Clark Mountain, uh, radio site and lost several radio stations. Uh, back on May sixth, um, we s- received notification that the, um, Fire Rescue Channel Three was out of service, and that the Sheriff's Office had lost two of their radio channels, uh, Sheriff's Office Two and Sheriff's Office Three. There's also further found out that the schools had lost some of their radios also. Um, when we went up there initially to figure out what had happened, we've actually found three points of failure. Uh, the main one being the actual generator itself. Uh, when we tested the generator, the generator needs about two hundred and twenty volts to, uh, produce enough power to run the equipment out there. Um, the generator was turning on, but when we did a little bit more further inspection, um, it was only actually producing fifty volts. Um, it eventually would choke itself out, hence why nothing would stay on or stay running up there. There are some battery, ba- back-up batteries, um, in place already on site. Uh, one of the batteries had just, um, failed due to age, much like your car battery. They last about three to five years. It had just run its end of life cycle, and that's how we happened to catch it. And then lastly, for the Sheriff's Office and school failure, uh, there's no uninterrupted power supplies on the, this equipment. So, even though the generator had kicked on, the U, there's no UPSs there to keep the, uh, power, uh, going to allow the transfer switch of the generator. So, we found three points of failure, um, during our, our discovery. Uh, since we have done this, uh, we did, we've actually already, uh, procured and actually deployed the, uh, two UPSs, and have put that on the Sheriff's Office side and on the school side, uh, to protect that. We do have a rental generator up there. Uh, we got that deployed within two days of realizing we had an issue and that the generator couldn't be fixed. Um, so there is a rental generator sitting up there right now. We realized that we're getting into the spring storm season or summer storm season, and it's Virginia. It's not, you know, will we lose power or anything like that? It's when will we lose power? So, we wanted to make sure that we had a reliable power source up there. Uh, we have gone ahead, we're working with Clear, our, uh, radio vendor also, to make sure that we replace all the, um, the batteries, and they will be actually just cycled out, and it's, uh, just the normal, uh, life cycle on the batteries, and we'll take care of replacing all of those and testing those out. Uh, when we first learned of this issue, we did think the generator was repairable. Uh, we thought it was one piece that was broken. The generator company did go up there and found that it was several pieces that were broken. Uh, the generator is twenty-five plus years old, and at this point, they're just not able to, to fix it. Um, we are going to replace everything, obviously. Uh, we do need the generator, um, up there, and it needs to be in working condition, since this is the primary radio site for Orange County, and it's going to be an estimated, uh, one-time cost of, uh, twenty-five thousand. We're still working with, um, Stephanie Schrapp to actually identify the true cost... We're still working with Stephanie Schaub to actually identify the true costs. And there's this talk of actually having to bring a crane in to actually get to the site properly now. Since the original deployment of the generator and the site has changed over the years. At this time, there's no action since everything does fall in line with the county's procurement policies, if there's any questions.
I have one Nicky, have you all considered going with a gel cell battery rather than a traditional battery? The life expectancy is a whole lot longer, they do cost a little bit more, but they're a lot cheaper and a lot more dependable over the long run.
I'd have to check with Clear, but I do not believe so, yeah.
It would definitely be worthwhile, you're going to find that it's almost a triple life expectancy and.
Have we already procured the batteries?
I have got a quote, yes, I've actually already go ahead, once I got the quote, I did tell them to go ahead and order them. But maybe that's, yeah.
I don't know, possibly they could be used on a different site also, just a thought.
Okay, we could, yeah, Lake of the Woods and Gibson needs replacing out too, so absolutely.
Were there any consequence, any significant consequences of the outage?
The sheriff's office lost two of their channels, the sheriff's office two and the sheriff's office three, and us losing fire rescue three. It didn't impact the schools too much because it was after hours, it was nine o'clock on a Thursday night. And luckily for us, the power did turn back on about two, three hours later. But obviously, we were given no warning, we had no idea. And I could only imagine being the officer on that channel and all of a sudden, nothing's working or having a fire incident not firing.
You didn't get any feedback from the fire and rescuer or the sheriff that they had a problem as a result?
Other than just direct communication that the center sites were down now.
Any questions for Nicky?
Have we checked the batteries at the other sites?
Yeah, that's, it's, once this happened, we realized, hey, it's probably about time. That it was kind of one of those, wait, it has been three, five years, we probably should, since we last deployed batteries. Let's just go ahead and double check them and make sure they're all in working service.
Is there any routine maintenance to check batteries on a routine schedule?
The batteries on, the generator is, the generator is PM quarterly. Clear will do a yearly maintenance, and I would have to also work with them to see if the actual tower sites and the batteries are getting checked yearly.
Clear does the generator maintenance?
No, that's under, with a generator services company, yeah.
It would just seem to me that there ought to be some way, or at least on some periodic basis, checking the capacity of the batteries to make sure that they're, they're good. As opposed to waiting till they fail and then check the other ones. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just remind the board, we are in the process of kicking off our needs assessment. The overall, you know, this is one of the symptoms of the state of the fiscal plan so to speak. That's coming up next week, right?
June third.
June third, and we've expanded the scope of that to include just about every user in the county of communications. Schools, towns, public works, landfill, and outside of public safety. So, one of the, when Nicky and I were looking at this, I wanted to keep you all aware that we are making these investments. And we're trying to not strand our investments, like the generator will be able to be picked up and moved if we need to move it. And trying to keep the system operating and kind of fail safe. But also understanding that there is a longer term strategy for the entire system still in there.
Anything else? Thank you Nicky.
Thank you.
Next item, Office on Youth Quarterly Report, Lysia.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. Just here this evening to give you an update on what we've been doing over at the Office on Youth. You guys have seen our snapshot with just some of the items and our crazy youth council kiddos with their balloons on their ponytails. But just want to hit on a few other items, we had our after prom celebration at the beginning of May. We had a great time, we did have a little bit lower attendance this year than last year, but we had eighty-five kids stay all night, which we thought was great. We had inflatables, Pepsi was one of our biggest sponsors, they donated drinks, prizes, Gordonsville Medical Pharmacy water. So the kids had stuff to do all night long, food all night long, games all night long, we did bingo. We even crowned Miss Orange County after prom during our Womanless Beauty Contest, that was probably the highlight of the night. The boys really got into that. This year, our theme was Vegas, so we did contract with a company to provide tables for Blackjack Roulette in Texas Hold'em. And the biggest roller got a prize at the end of the night, so the kids thought that was great. We did recognize our sponsors this year in a little bit different way, we did our T-shirts as usual. But we also came up with a poster that we could post around, anybody that we had their logo for, we put on the poster. Anybody we didn't, has their names on it, we had this on our website as well as posted around after prom. Just so people could see how generous our community has been to us this year. So, another good event, the kids were safe and we just had a really good time. Parenting classes, as I stated before, one of our focuses this year is to provide more parenting classes. In addition to the Positive Action Parenting that is going on right now every Tuesday night. We've held two one-two-three magic classes at Locust Grove Elementary, I'm not sure if you are familiar with those. It is a program to help parents learn how to discipline in a different way. And not only just discipline, but how to stop bad behavior or start good behavior. We did two classes on the eastern end of the county because we had such a high demand. A total of twelve families with, who are parents of twenty-nine children participated. We provided childcare snacks, and one of our Strengthening Families facilitators is able to facilitate this program as well. So it went really well and they're already screaming that they want another, so we'll be working on getting another one up probably in the fall. Our Strengthening Families Program, our final twelve to sixteen-year-old program concluded with a graduation on May eleventh. The programs had, or the program had six families participate with ten youth graduates, so we were very happy about that. We are also, Ashley and I are excited about the new program beginning July first. We've been working with the three childcare directors on the new program Positive Action. We get very confused between the Positive Action Parenting and the Positive Action, they name everything the same. But this is for the kids, we're going to incorporate it into our after-school programs at Gordon Barber Orange and Locust Grove. And they'll meet with the facilitator once a week to work on different topics and focuses. And that's part of our new VFHY grant. And then we're also bringing back the ten to fourteen-year-old Strengthening Families Program. We already have a waiting list for families for that as well, so we're very excited. Upcoming activities for us, I believe I mentioned it before, but we are doing a resource fair on June twenty-fourth called Get Connected Orange. We are partnering with DSS for that. We already have seventeen vendors from Orange County and surrounding counties that will be coming. We are still waiting for more to come in, we will be sending out formal invitations to the Board of Supervisors, we encourage you to attend. The point of the whole day is to let citizens come in and see what resources we have. We hear everyone, quite frequently, well, I didn't know we had that, I didn't know we had that, so we're trying to bring it all into one place. I have a meeting tomorrow with Justin Sarver at the school bus office. To see if we can arrange for transportation to be provided at certain stops throughout the county. Because this is grant funded, we can use the grant funding for that, so that we can hopefully get some of these families that really need to come in. Then, let's see, we are going to be working with the, switching gears, sorry, car seat safety. We're going to be working with the Gordonsville Police Department starting in the fall, helping educate parents on car seat safety. We have a lot of parents who, kids aren't even, either aren't in a car seat belt at all. Or they don't have their car seats installed correctly or whatever. And it's not just the elementary kids, it's younger siblings and stuff, so we want to help catch the parents and educate them on that. I'll be attending an event in Manassas on June twenty-fifth, I'm really excited about get to go watch them crash some cars, I think I mentioned this before. And we'll be able to recertify after that. One of our main focuses over the next year is to bring more attention that we can do car seat safety checks and education at our office. I have done eight over the past two years, doesn't sound like a lot, but that's eight more kids whose parents know how to correctly install their car seats. So, really happy about that.
How do you advertise that?
The town police has, or excuse me, the Orange Town Police, they know we do it, they've referred quite a few people over. People will call fire houses, the town police, just to ask if anybody can do it. And I believe it's on our website, if not, we're going to have a new thing up for that. So, we ask that people make appointments, because I'm in and out quite frequently, but I want to make sure that I'm there to get that done. And then June twenty-sixth, we're going to hold our first annual Office on Youth Children's Golf Tournament. Meadows Farm reached out to us to help sponsor a golf tournament for our office. We would like to use the proceeds to support our Breakfast Buddies Project Excel and After Prom Program. The Youth Commission's been wrangled into this, they're working on getting whole sponsors and everything that goes along with that right now. So, we've got a lot going on. And then I had one more thing I needed to address, I believe the last time I was up here, Mr. Fram, you had questions about the CSA. The expenses for the Special Education Day placements, why the numbers had gone up. I did go meet with Susan Ailer with the, she's the special ed director at Orange County Public Schools. Wonderful meeting, got a lot of information from her. Basically, they're seeing exactly what we're seeing, we're seeing more kids, younger kids with more complex issues. In return, it's more complex treatments. And one of the things that we discussed in their budget this year that they requested, they're going to be starting an elementary special ed program. That will be able to bring some of those kids back home. They're hoping this program will bring them back home, get them settled, and then incorporate them back into a regular classroom. The program's there, if they need to bring them back, they plan for it to be fluid. They can manage about eight kids right now is their thought process on that. So, she's very excited, they have the program at middle school and high school level, this will be the first year with elementary. And it's much needed, this is a trend, not just in Orange County, but around everywhere.
Does CSA funding go to help the schools and?
This program? No, she found funding, and I don't remember where it's from, but she found funding elsewhere. If they did this program, she could get funding elsewhere that'll support the entire program without having CSA help pay for that part of it at all.
But CSA can, I mean, if CSA can fund that as opposed to the private special ads?
I honestly don't know, I don't see why not, but I will check on that because it's through a special program that she's getting funding for.
Understand, but I'm saying for other situations, if CSA funding will, will deal with that. And help offset some of the costs that the schools got. Because there's a, if the school's coming up, if they're not getting a grant and they're coming up with their own funds. And yet they're, with the CSA, we've got a, what, twenty-eighty split, something like that?
For, for things like that, yes, it's very close.
That's right, so we can use more CSA money, or at least the state's money relative to ours in the school system.
Exactly.
Okay.
So does that answer your questions about that? It was, it was a great meeting and I learned a lot about all of the layers of, you know, how they get to the point of where they send a child outside of the public schools for education. It was, it was very enlightening, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anybody, I'm sorry, did anybody have questions for? Okay, alright, thank you. Next is the Finance Office Quarterly Report, Glenda Bradley.
Hopefully everybody has a copy of the quarterly report. This is the report for the quarter ended March thirty-first of two thousand and fifteen. And as of March thirty-first, things look pretty in line with budget estimates. In the general fund, we had revenues that were up by seven point three-five percent overall. Our expenditures were just down slightly.
Well, is that up from last year or up from the budget?
That is up from last year.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, if you look at page eleven.
That's alright, you've answered the question.
Okay, but there, there is a year-to-year comparison on page eleven with some, some notes explaining some of the variances from year to year on page twelve. But generally speaking, in the general fund, revenues are up by the seven point three-five percent. A lot of that is driven by the change in the tax rate for the current year. That's about two point one million year-over-year new revenue. The other category that had a substantial increase was other local taxes. And a big part of that is the change in the distribution of the sales tax revenue between the county and towns. On the expenditure side in the general fund, there was a point zero four percent decrease. There were areas of both increase and decrease throughout the general fund. For instance, in the first category legislative, you'll see an increase of seventy-three thousand. And that is almost entirely made up of the payment back to the state for the local aid to the Commonwealth. We also had a decrease in fire and rescue services when comparing year to year. And that was driven by, number one, vacancy savings in that department. I know they just filled four positions within the last couple of weeks. And also, their vehicle repair was down because we are doing better with keeping up with our vehicle replacement. The Health Department's request for funding for the current year was way down. So that also shows up and helps sort of level things out in the general fund. And you can also see the increase in correction and detention that is made up primarily of the capital contribution for the regional jails expansion. In some of the other funds, the School Operating Fund had used about fifty-five percent of their local, locally budgeted funds for the year. Compared to sixty-three percent at the end of the third quarter last year. And a lot of that can be affected by the timing of their capital projects and just when they can figure out as far as school schedules. When the best timing is for those. Social Services Fund, we had revenues that were at sixty-nine percent of their budget estimates. While expenditures were at sixty-eight percent. So that's, you know, right on, on par with where it should be. The Debt Service Fund, almost all the debt service payments have been made at this point. A hundred percent were made last year. This year, we had the estimate in there for the, the two ambulance purchase, the lease purchase. And you probably remember, we did a budget transfer of some of that money to, to purchase the new voting machine equipment. But that's why it's only at ninety-seven point nine instead of a hundred percent. The Insurance Fund is doing well. At the end of fourteen, you know, we had a hundred and eight hundred and thirty-three thousand in fund balance. At the end of the third quarter, we had collections from the county and the employee contributions at seventy-four point two percent of the budget. And sixty-six percent of expenditures when compared to the budget. The Capital Projects Fund expenditures are included in here, so you can see where the various capital projects are in their lifespan. The Airport Fund and the Landfill Fund both appear to be right on target. Our cash balances were up by five point two percent higher than they were the previous March. And that is mainly due to the fact that we did add the fund balance last year. And also the infusion of, of tax revenue in the current year. The Juvenile Detention Center Report is included in the very back. And it continues to show that we're using more of the childcare days than what we have budgeted. And what they had estimated for the year. And I, Mr. David attended last week a meeting of the board. And brought back an estimate of our true-up, which is currently at fifty-five thousand. So, we did do a budget amendment from the Health Insurance, I mean, the Health Department Contribution Savings Savings. To be able to fund that true-up bill when it comes, so that is taken care of at this point. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Glenda? Thank you.
As you have time to look at it, feel free to call me.
We probably will. Thank you. Next item, the Burkett Conservation Ease Request. Josh?
Members of the board, we've received a request for a letter of consistency from the VOF, the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. Which they typically do for easement requests to show that they comply with the local comprehensive plan. This particular property is on Marquee Road, it's about fifty-four acres. Just to give you a bit of background, as a procedural matter, when properties like this are located within the A-one land use designation in the comprehensive plan, administratively, we go ahead and say that they're consistent because we specifically say that in our plan. A-two was admittedly kind of a cash-all area. We don't specifically mention conservation easements. So, I'm here to ask the Board's consensus on whether or not this is consistent.
Comments from the Board?
Just a general comment. I think in your, your process sounds right to me. I mean, the A-one, the comp plan is, you know, fairly specific as to.
Says it's incorrect.
And, but A-two, as with some other categories, but particularly A-two is such a mixture of things that I, I think that dealing with them on a case-by-case basis is, is the only way to do it. This particular one, I think, is probably fine because it's, it's in one of those mixed communities. There, there are farms, small lots.
There's an easement across the road.
And, yeah, and green boxes and everything else. I mean, you know, within a, a thousand feet, you have everything that A-two is. But I think that, process-wise, to, to the bigger question, I think you're right. I don't have to look at each one of those individually.
Anybody else have any comment on that? I would concur with Jim's. A-one, come and talk to us, but this one here looks pretty, pretty straightforward.
All right, so I have consensus?
Make Jack sweat first.
None of which means that, that all of us or, or maybe any of us, or, or what number of us might be in favor of, from a philosophical standpoint of easements.
Very different question.
They, yeah, that's a very different question, but the law is what it is. And in terms of our comprehensive plan, certainly, this seems to be consistent.
And his property rights.
The only other thing I will point out though is, this.
You already won, why are you?
I gotta make a point there. When we, when the come comes in another five years to look at the comp plan, this area of the county in, in particular, was always kind of a, you know, what do we call this area? And if we keep granting consistency to these compl- or these conservation easement requests, it might change the character of the area. So, that's the only thing I'm gonna point out.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Josh. Okay, next item is the County Attorney's Report.
Yeah, just very quickly, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, there was a presentation from the Sheriff's Office about body cameras, and I pointed out there might be a way to raise some funds. I have since met with the Commonwealth's attorney. She is wide open to the idea. I've drafted an ordinance amendment, and I think you'll see it on a, but, on an agenda coming up here that would establish this three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee for DUI, reckless driving, driving on suspended, and a few other offenses. And I talked to Commonwealth's attorney. The only thing she suggested is, once we implement it, to sit and talk with the judge and make sure he's on board. But the ball is rolling in that direction towards generating that fee.
I see a nod back there.
One thing that you may want to continue to look into is the practices of other law enforcement agencies in the state in regards to request for information from those body cameras. Yeah, just, I, I was watching something in the Hampton Roads area the other day. I found it very interesting, so.
All right. Anything, any questions for? Okay, next item is the County Administrator's Report.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Next item is New Business Letter of Support for Grant Funding for the Orange County Free Clinic. This is an email that came to me. And basically, they want to get a grant for, basically supplying additional people to help with medication assistance. And it doesn't cost us anything, but County Administrators drafted a response. Any questions about it? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Old Business Courthouse Security Project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. If you call back in September of last year, the Board authorized the retention of Wiley Wilson to provide design services for security upgrades at the Orange County Courthouse. With the input of the Sheriff's Office, Public Works, and courthouse staff, Wiley Wilson has produced the attached design drawings. You can find it in your board packet. The overall scope of the project includes physical security upgrades, additional security cameras, and electronic access control. I will note that the proposed access control system is to, has been designed to serve as the head-end system manager for county-wide access control in the future. So, any facility we decide we want to implement access control in, it'll be just a matter of plugging in the hardware to the existing manager that we are proposing for this project. Public Works has identified Architectural Products of Virginia out of Ashland, APV, as a potential contractor to complete the entire project. APV comes highly recommended and has done similar work for Dogwood Village, Orange County Public Schools, and Orange County Airport. The Finance Department and County Attorney have identified a cooperative contract through UVA that fits the general scope of the project that we can use to procure APV. To date, the county has used thirty-two thousand dollars of the original one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars allocated for the project, leaving a to- leaving a remaining amount of one-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. APV has submitted a proposal for completion of the entire project totaling one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand three hundred and eight dollars. This falls within Wiley Wilson's estimate of one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. The Sheriff's Office has identified available funds from their current operating budget to supplement the unfunded twenty-six thousand dollars. The Sheriff's Office and Public Works staff recommend the Board of Supervisors proceed with the project as proposed, using the remaining funds as well as additional funds from the Sheriff's Office budget. If you have any questions with me, it's Mark Pino and Jeff Lankash from APV.
Only question I have is the system that controls this, the same system that it controls the airports?
No, not currently. That is a separate system. We would have the ability to add the airport onto the new system if we choose to at a later date.
Add an additional cost?
Right, you would have to purchase the hardware and all the components for the facility, but essentially, they would be plugged into the manager.
Actually, the hardware portion of it would be software. It's a, the platform is an open architecture, mercury-based platform, and a lot of access control, software. Okay, so it's, it's a software conversion rather than hardware also. Okay.
Has anyone from the?
Go ahead.
The, the courts been involved or commented or?
Initially, it was the Sheriff's Office, specifically the Court Security Division, who did a, an analysis of security, and once they came up with an overall plan, we then reached out to courthouse staff, got their input and feedback, had a meeting to address any concerns they had. We came up, you know, we, we addressed everything, we came up to an agreement at the end, and that's what we have proposed right now.
And that includes, and we held a meeting here with the Juvenile Domestic Relations Judges, Circuit Court Judges, Commonwealth Attorney, all, basically all the tenants of the building, so to speak, had an opportunity to have input, and some of them took that opportunity, others were comfortable with what we were putting forward. So, I, I certainly can represent to the Board that, that this project, as it's currently configured, it meets everybody's boot.
What, is there a?
Two megapixel was. In, in the world of cameras where eight is standard now, two gives you a good enough picture? Or is that gonna be too grainy or?
No, it's, it's gonna give you, in the applications, everything's application-driven with cameras. You know, distance, lighting, how, the, the degree of resolution, the frame rate, how many, how you wanna view the picture in relation to, to time. The two megapixels is really the standard of the, of the camera industry right now. And it, it will give you resolution that's, that's far greater than anything you've seen on analog cameras. Probably twenty times greater than what, you know, what you would, you would see on analog, on a smart resolution. You have the ability to zoom in pixels, you know, zoom in all, using the software. And I would say the camera systems that we sell, that, that the two megapixels will work for us. If you have, if you have an outside application where you're trying to view things from a long ways away, you can go to a different camera configuration. If you were trying to view license plates at a given place, you'd use a different, different configuration, a different lens configuration on a camera. But for this application in a building, it's, it's your best bet.
Okay.
What about the schedule? I didn't, I, do we, do we, do you have a schedule at this point as to?
At this point, we don't have a schedule. After this, we would go with Court Security and coordinate with them. Best way to go about completing the project with as little impact to the court operations as possible. And that would most likely dictate any schedule.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, if you recall, the genesis of this was a generator and money that was, was there ostensibly for a generator, understanding that perhaps the jail cells and power loss would not work electronically, but it would, they operate manually in that kind of condition. The Board agreed to look at maybe reprogramming these funds since we were paying interest on them. They were idled to this application. So, this is, and, and this is the first one that Aaron's been able to bring, kind of from the start to the end. I think we were laughing that it's taken longer to kind of get our arms around what to do with these dollars than it will actually take in, in the project. That's the nature of how this, this process works. So, this was the generator funds. It has not changed the condition of having a generator, but it's not, it's nothing we're gonna have to program or, or deal with right now. This is more pressing.
Any other questions for Aaron? Can I get a motion? Yeah, can I get a motion? Motion, and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen. If I just might point out, between Public Works and the Sheriff's Office, Bill Hayes, and Aaron Kurt, there were a lot of folks that took a lot of time to kind of coordinate this through. And I think this was a, a good example of kind of cross-department collaboration to come up with a, with a solution.
Well, just as I looked at the plans and all the stuff, and I didn't look at them very detailed, but it looks like there's enough complexity there that I'm hoping the Sheriff and, and all of his people and the people at this court are happy with it because this is not one that I'm saying.
I take it from their presence that they're, this meets the needs that they had laid out several months ago, so. Or addresses the concerns, I should say.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, Amendments to the Orange County Procurement Policy. Stephanie? Oh.
Not Stephanie, but Stephanie is, is out sick today, and she sounded pretty bad. So, it was that stay home. And these are the amendments to the procurement policy that the Board had seen before and had a little bit of discussion about. But Tom and I thought we could try to handle this item, and if you have any questions, the changes that Stephanie and, and Tom have laid out are included in Stephanie's memo within your package. But basically, aligning our local procurement policy more with the state policy because it's been changed over the years. Thresholds have been raised. And this would put ours more in line with that. I think last time, we did talk about the number of quotes required, and as it's written now, it would be requiring three quotes for purchases between five and one-hundred thousand dollars, rather than the four previously proposed.
The, this is, I'm looking at the resolution. It establishes the County Administrator as the purchasing agent.
Right.
And may delegate the administrative purchasing responsible for, to a responsible subordinate upon approval of the Board. Has this been documented and, and has this been done and documented specifically?
That part of the policy is not new and predates my time here. So, I, you know, to my knowledge, it was done when the policy was originally adopted, but we could certainly update it with, you know, a new ratifying that.
If there's a specific, I don't know whether it designated it to an individual or to a position.
I would assume it's to Glenda and then certainly Stephanie right now for the media who are delegated.
I was just, it was, it was more of an administrative thing to, to make sure that that, that loop was closed.
Right.
Not, it's not.
The way we have interpreted that, I think, you know, within the staff, was that the County Administrator is the purchasing agent and then has delegated some of these authorities to.
But in this case, it said it had to be approved upon approval of the Board. That's why I just wondered if we could, at some point, to close that loop.
Right.
Okay.
I, I would say the loop is sort of closed. I mean, I would say it's de facto closed because it's Stephanie who presents. You accept your data from Stephanie, and you vote on Stephanie making the motion. So, every time we're making the procurement decision, so I think you've de facto designated Stephanie as the.
If that's, if that's my legal interpretation, I'm happy with it. All right. Any further questions or comments?
May I make one suggestive change, which I just caught earlier today? In paragraph five, very last sentence says competitively negotiated procurement for good services other than professional services shall require written justification and approval by the Board of Supervisors. That's current state law. That changes July one, and that requirement is eliminated. And so, rather than have to come back to you now, we'll have to still comply with state law till July one. But my recommendation would be that we strike that last sentence, starting with the word completely down to the word supervisors, and then on July one, this will be in conformance with state law.
Any thoughts on that?
Sounds good to me.
It sounds like it's included in the sentence above it because it, you know, he's talking about solicitation procedures and, you know, the, the whole list is there. Seal bid, two-step, sealed bid, competitive negotiation. It's all there anyway, so.
Well, see, the way the current state law is written and it changes, if you were doing the competitive negotiation, we actually had to come to you first, and you had to make a finding that competitive negotiation was the best way to go.
Like we've done on all the.
Like we did in landfill, for example.
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at the consent agenda. Had a number of those.
Right. With this, on July one, the state law changes and says you just treat competitive negotiation the way you do everything else. And so, that's why I suggest taking that sentence out because you won't need formal justification and written approval beforehand. So, just if you strike that, then we're matching state law on July one.
Is there a motion on it?
Well, yeah, we need a motion because of the resolution.
I so moved with the amendments made by the County Attorney.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, Fees for Use of Fire and EMS. Mr. Harkness?
Chief Joyce, this has been his project. He's gonna be presenting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this is a follow-up to the last conversation we had at the last meeting. The Board had directed.
Uh, the board had directed us to, uh, their suggestion, include some language in a contract. And in consult with counsel, we have done that. You have, um, the proposed contract in front of you. And I believe the plan was that it will come before the board this evening for some action.
It's ready to be acted on.
I only, I had a question on item six, we were talking about the general liability insurance policy. It wasn't clear to me what we were trying to accomplish. I mean, I, I know what a general liability policy is, but why, is there, is there something that we're trying to be a protected or a lost payee or, or some? It wa- it wasn't clear to me what we were trying to accomplish with item six.
Well, I think the goal is if, if they have that insurance, it reduces, if not eliminates, the risk that we have to deal with somebody looking to us for, as a possible deep pocket, which we wouldn't be because we have sovereign immunity. But i- it's just designed, and it's also designed to protect the general public.
Should, should it have in there that we are the, um, most payee on that?
Uh, doesn't matter. Again, we've got sovereign immunity, so it's, they couldn't, they couldn't-
I also questioned the million dollars. I mean, it, 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 that's a, that's sort of a standard level. But, you know, there may be some smaller operations that have a different number. And I, I just, I, that, that, I don't recall having discussed that last time. And it, and it, it might be perfectly fine. I just, I, I just want to make sure that we, it's something we need and it gets us a level of protection that we, that we care about.
We don't need it. It's more designed to protect the public from the, on the particular event, but the county itself doesn't need the protection.
Well, uh, and the point is, do all of these events have insurance? Are we, are we putting a new demand on them or, uh?
Well, that was my first reaction to the question.
They better have insurance. Yeah, but it's, it's, it's not just to protect other people, it's to protect the people having the event. Okay, all right, that's, that's-
It's not a, if the board is asking, that's not a question we have ever asked people when they approach us before.
And I, I'm a little bit concerned-
I'm a lawyer, I always add that stuff, but I-
But I'm concerned about asking it because it, it involves us in something that-
Because between the public and the, and the event sponsor-
I hope, and I hope it stays that way.
And we're not involved at all.
Yeah.
Well, no, now suppose they have pyrotechnics and something goes wrong, they blow up our ambulance.
That's right.
You want that million dollars insured.
I, any, any organization that has a board should.
Well, I, I can tell you, I, I'm the guy, when the White Cane guys go out to the, uh, to the Locust Grove Center or some of these other, uh, places, I'm the guy that makes sure that the national insurance covers them. So I know that, uh, I mean, you're just holding, holding a cup out here, you better have a million dollars insurance.
That's, that's standard.
Yeah, I, I can't, honestly, I can't think of any organization that I've ever seen a standby done for that doesn't carry reliability, uh, usually of, of board errors and omissions insurance.
Okay. Any more comments about insurance? Y'all like this provision in there?
I do.
I see the lawyer nodding his head. All right. Any further discussion or questions?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I understand, I understand the hesitancy to put this in here as kind of a backdoor regulation. But then I also understand that it's kind of a way to sort of help, I mean, there's, there's the, there's the, uh, example that, that Hill gave, but it also protects the county to a, to a degree by saying, we're only going to be providing, we're only going to be sending our employees into places that are, where they're doing stuff right to begin with. We're not, we don't want to get mixed up in the sort of fly-by-night situation, so.
That's a good-
I mean, there is kind of a-
That's a good rationale. And larger events, that, my, my, my concern is one of, you know, the, the, it, this will narrow it. And maybe that's what we want, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, to, to the larger events, the ones that will, uh-
Most, most any existing entity or organization is going to have insurance coverage. I mean, if they're an existing recurring, if they're an entity that, you know, other than somebody's doing a one-time event, they're going to have insurance.
Okay.
If they have to do any financing for it, that's going to be required, so.
And, and-
I mean, anybody's in business at all, whether you have, uh, uh, five hundred customers a day or five customers a day, you gotta have-
Yeah.
They know it's liability.
Yeah.
Standard.
Or more.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any board comment?
Yes, I would love for us to get decent internet in this building. So that I can view my agenda uninterrupted during these meetings. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, I, I do have board comment, but I'm going to actually reserve it until after the break.
So we've got some time to discuss it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
One thing, the tourism department with, in conjunction with the rail fan people had a reception and announcement today, gathering about thirty people at the train depot. It was very nice, very well organized and well attended, and the cookies were superb.
All right.
Uh, all right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or attained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Two, discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. And three, discussion of the resignation of a specific, an appointment of a specific board appointees. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty seven eleven A one, A five, and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County hereby authorize discussion of the fore-said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have no public hearing scheduled for seven P M. So as soon as we finish with our closed meeting, um, uh, our insurance consultant, uh, is here.
Okay, so it isn't, we, we, we want to start early or late?
If, if you want to start earlier than seven P M.
Okay. Okay, we will continue on with the board comment?
We got a closed session, guys.
Oh, yeah, we need that, uh-
Yes, sir.
Read the magic words.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
All right. Now we can-
The reason that our lights aren't on.
What's that?
One set, one set of lights is not on.
Oh, him a glass of tonic.
Oh, all right, oh.
It's better.
There goes that little generator for him.
Here goes our electric bill, the meter goes a little faster now. Wake up the little button. All right. We'll continue on with the board comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, uh, have served the best, three months on the, uh, Orange County, uh, Social Virginia, the, in the Orange County position on the Social Virginia Regional Jail. And, uh, for a variety of reasons having to do with, uh, my, uh, own scheduling and, uh, so forth, I would like to step aside from that position. Uh, it's a, it's an extremely important position and, uh, it's one that we need to really be, uh, focused on. Uh, but at this time, I don't think I'm, uh, able to continue in that position. So, uh, I would recommend that my, the, our alternate representative in the person of Mr. Crozier, uh, become our, our, our representative.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Do you have a second? Second. Second. We got the second over here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we should al- also appoint an alternate, a new alternate. All right, uh, yes. Unless Mr. Crozier would like to be both the alternate and the primary. Mr. Crozier, would you like to recommend an alternate?
Uh, I would like to, uh, recommend that the county administrator serve in that position due to the workload of the other supervisors.
I think it's a fine idea.
All right. Do I have a second to that?
That's a second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we now have a new representative on the jail board and a new alternate.
Congratulations, you move.
Thank you, sir.
And as a result, uh, I will be assuming the Board of Supervisor role on the Litter Control Committee.
Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, anything more on board comment? Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, and get the presentation on the, uh, health and dental insurance benefits.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, as you remember, during the budget process, during our work sessions, we talked about our health insurance, our new self-in, self-insured, uh, health insurance fund and the status of that. And we're back here now with our actual renewal quotes. Um, also, our benefits committee, which is made up of, um, members of the county staff, social services staff, and the school administration staff have met and gone over our renewal quotes. Um, worked with our, um, benefits advisors. Um, Carrie Bartlett is here with Digital Benefits Advisors to, um, give a presentation tonight. But we considered, um, several different alternatives and some new, um, possibilities that are available to us. Um, and we have a recommendation for you tonight where, although you certainly could act, take action tonight, um, we are not expecting you to do that until, um, the first meeting in June. Um, but basically, our recommendation will be to, um, replace our current P P O, um, that's called Key Care fifteen with a Key Care twenty-five plan, which has a five hundred dollar deductible. And also to eliminate the H M O plan that we currently have that has no deductible. And those two plans are where the majority of our employees are enrolled. So by doing that, um, the employees will save, um, there's about eighty-seven and a half percent of the employees that would, um, either have no change in their contribution or a, have a actual savings in their monthly contribution. Um, by doing this, if a couple of assumptions are true, the county would stand to save about two hundred and twenty-five thousand between the three entities, uh, because there would be such a large group moving from the H M O plan with no deductible to the H M O with a five hundred dollar deductible. Um, I will, uh, turn it over to Carrie now. She's got a PowerPoint presentation for you and I think she's got some handouts.
Thank you for your time tonight. All right, and do we have it on the?
Can we put it?
No. No.
I don't have it.
Okay, well, that's fine. You can follow along with this. I've got it on a flash drive. If we want to load it?
Yeah.
Is that going to be too much? It's going to just- So that says no signal. There you go. Okay. And then, I just may be- All right, great. Um, well, again, thank you all, um, for your time tonight. Um, like Glenda said, what we want to spend time talking about is the medical renewal. Um, you'll see the, um, agenda really talking about the renewal, um, some of the Anthem mandated changes, things that we don't necessarily have a choice over, but we want to convey to you what those changes are, what options we evaluated, what our recommendations are, as well as a long-term strategy. We're talking specifically about this year, but we also want to talk a little bit about what we plan on doing in the next three to five years as well. And then we'll talk about the other benefits that are in place, um, as well, and what those action items will be for the renewal this year. And as Glenda mentioned, no decision is necessary tonight, so please, as you have questions, please let me know, um, throughout the presentation. Um, the renewal this year, um, for the upcoming October renewal, um, is coming in from Anthem with about a ten and a half percent increase. That's after we've moved to a self-funded plan two years ago, um, in two thousand and thirteen. And self-funded essentially means we're using Anthem to process our claims, um, as well as, um, give us discounts for services when your membership is using services, um, but Orange and employees are paying for the claims as they come in throughout the year. Previously, you were fully insured, and essentially what that means is you just paid one set rate regardless of what your claims were. And if you had a good year, Anthem may have kept some of that extra money. If you had a bad year, you got a really big increase. By being self-funded, to some degree, you can help mitigate some of that because your claims are your claims. It's truly the administration, um, of the needs of the employees as they're using benefits. So this year, the renewal again called for a ten and a half percent increase in dollars. That's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars overall. Five hundred and twenty-four thousand is being picked up by Orange as the county and the schools and, um, social services. Um, the reason for the increase this year is because of large claims. Um, we're defining large claims as any claim over fifty thousand dollars per member that's covered. Um, we've had over twenty-one of those large claimants, um, in the last twelve months.
How many people do we have insured?
You have right at eight hundred and fifty.
That's employees, but then total.
Employees.
Total insured.
I don't know if I have these set.
Eight hundred employees?
Eight hundred and fifty employees, and they're enrolled in tiers, employee only, all the way down to family.
Okay.
I think total insured is around twelve hundred.
Hundred, that sounds right.
Twelve, thirteen.
About twelve hundred, uh, with families?
Mm-hmm.
Or dependents, spouses.
And so, um, twenty-one members have had over fifty thousand dollars in claims. Um, those twenty-one members make up only one point seven percent of your total population, but the dollar amount that was paid out for those claims, um, makes up about forty-five percent of the total claims dollars. Um, and so that is a significant number, um, that we don't typically see in your group. So it's larger than average. Um, just to give you reference, last year, we only had twelve claimants that had over. So we've almost doubled the number of large claims for the year. Now, ideally, what happens is we have a year that's kind of bad, but then over time, you're going to regress back to your norm. So we should see you come back down in the next year or so. Um, but because of those large claims, we would have our underwriting team, um, on staff. They actually look at the renewal and the claims information and independently come up with a renewal, um, based on information that we have as well. And we could have justified anywhere up to a twenty-one and a half percent increase. And so-
And a question, when you look at these twenty-one, are these, uh, people that have a spike in their need? Or is this people who- are these, uh, people that have a spike in their need, or is this people who are staying at a high level over a long period of time?
It's, uh, some of both. You have some ongoing claims that we've seen for a few years, you have some that are just an anomaly, something where they might have one year where they have a large, um, claim need, and then it typically goes back down, or we wouldn't expect them to see something like that. Um, so it's a little bit of a, of a mix is, is what we've seen, um, within the group. And so ideally, like I said, over time, your claims are going to go back down, it's just one year where we have a lot. Um, luckily, last year, we adjusted, um, Anthem said we could have had a reduction in the rates, um, that they had proposed, but we kept the rates the same because we were still new to the self-funded plan. It was only the first year in, and we wanted to make sure that the reserve had enough money to cover that increase. And because we kept that, um, it made this increase not as bad as it could have been, essentially, for this, for this year. Um, so with looking at that increase, some of the things that we're gonna talk about tonight are some, some ideas around helping, um, introduce more consumerism to your employees, to help maintain some of that cost, to share the cost between you and the employees as well. Um, but first, we're gonna talk a little bit about Anthem's mandated changes. They, um, Anthem and other insurance carriers, not just Anthem, they will, um, from time to time, have some changes that they put in place across the board. You don't really have a choice as to whether or not you put them in place. Um, some of these are affected by healthcare reform. So that's the first one. Now, your prescription drug costs under the plans will now count towards the out-of-pocket maximum. That's the worst-case scenario, the most that someone will pay out of pocket for the course of the year. It's increasing a thousand dollars for an individual or two thousand for family coverage. Um, but the benefit to that is that today, there is a separate prescription drug out-of-pocket of thirty-five hundred dollars for an individual or twelve thousand for family. And so if an employee were to have a lot of prescription drug needs as an employee or as a member using the plan, they're actually coming out a little bit better with this change in the plan because it's just increasing your medical out-of-pocket a thousand or two thousand instead of having that separate, um, out-of-pocket. And that was affected, it's a mandate by healthcare reform, is that everything be in one bucket instead of having separate buckets for medical and prescription.
So anybody with a chronic situation, a thousand or two thousand, it's not very much.
But that also impacts the rate, I mean, that, that increases the liability from, or the payout, I shouldn't say, not the liability.
It does, but it offsets it a little bit too because everyone's out-of-pocket maximum is a little bit higher now, even though the prescription drug cost is in there, um, they're still potentially, the member is potentially incurring more, and so there's a little bit more cost share on the member, um, to some degree on the medical benefit side because of this. And so it, it helps offset it to some degree. Um, prescription drug costs, we've seen go up, um, pretty significantly, just in general, not for Orange specifically. Um, and so we'll see over time, kind of how that adjusts, but this is one of those mandated things by, um, healthcare reform that was put in place to help protect the members more than anything. Um, one of the other changes, and this is put in place by Anthem, the next two is, um, your prescription drugs will now, instead of having three tiers for the prescription drug cost, will now have four tiers. And that new fourth tier is going to be, um, a specialty medications, so those are typically self-administered injectables, biomedical drugs, high-cost drugs that typically are just coming out from the different, um, pharmaceutical companies.
Appetite C.
Um, that would definitely be a, um, tier four. Um, the cost for some of those is anywhere from eighty to one hundred and fifty thousand for three months of treatment. Um, total cost for that specific, um, new medication that came out. The members aren't paying that, anywhere near that, but those are some high-cost drugs. Now, the benefit to that is that over time, you wouldn't have the transplant need or other things or ongoing health conditions, so the idea is that you save money over time, but there's a big initial cost.
So insulin's.
Insulin, um, is still gonna fall, um, between tiers one and three, um, typically. It's going to be, tier four is those advanced, haven't been out very long type medications, um, that are out there. Um, sometime, I think there's an Imbril or Humira, one of those two are out there. Those are rheumatoid arthritis drugs that run around three, three to four thousand dollars a month for treatment. So it's those high costs, really high-cost drugs that move into that fourth tier. And the benefit is twenty percent of the cost up to two hundred dollars total per month for filling that. And remember, that's counting towards the out-of-pocket maximum now for their medical benefits. Um, the other benefit change is that prescription drug mail order co-pays are moving to two and a half times the retail co-pay, um, for mail orders, so mail order is when you can get a three-month supply of a medication mailed to your home. Um, today, it's set up where tier one pays one co-pay, tier two pays two co-pays, and tier three pays three co-pays. It's moving to two and a half co-pays regardless of the tier that you're on. Um, so it's a little bit of a disincentive for the folks that were taking advantage of it for the, um, tier one medications. It's really now just a convenience factor. Um, we saw, um, insurance companies, most of them had the two or two and a half times co-pays about four or five years ago, and then Coventry and Anthem changed their program to that one, two, three co-pay, and now it looks like they're switching back. So it's really not an advantage to the employee other than the convenience of it being mailed to their home now going forward. Um, other mandated benefits that are coming in to play, not necessarily because of healthcare reform, but because of other legislative mandates, um, applied behavioral health, that's coverage for the evaluation of autism spectrum disorder. That benefit had a thirty-five thousand dollar limit every year. That limit's been removed, um, so it's an unlimited dollar amount that can be spent on that evaluation and, um, treatment of that. And then mental health benefits, there are a couple of things that fall under the mental health, but the general idea behind the mental health benefits is that as a whole, they are now having to be treated as though they were any other medical condition. So if you were going into the hospital for a mental health issue, it has to be treated as an inpatient hospital stay. Um, uh, before, you may have had different benefits for a mental health, um, type stay, and now.
Is that, is that the, uh, uh, Healthcare Act or is that state?
That is state and federal legislation that's gone into play for those. Um, it's called the Mental Health Parity Act, and over the past couple of years, they've had, um, some adjustments to the benefits, um, for that, and it's just essentially making it more like a medical condition than a separate type of benefit or, um, condition that's covered.
Yeah, just the autism, in fact, when Baco had their legislative day, we were in some hearings where this was absolutely a change at the state level, requiring it now to have no limit on, any, any, uh, any limits on, um, insurance, uh, you know, caps. And so that was a state legislative change that now affects everybody's, that all plans have to offer.
And there have been other states, in particular with the autism spectrum, that, uh, just working in the industry and having worked on claims for employees, Virginia was really behind on the times when it came to that, um, employees that were coming from Maryland, um, for example, the benefits just didn't match really what they had for a condition that is fairly new, and they're still trying to figure out how to best treat it. Um, so for those folks that have lobbied for it, it's a big win. Um, you know, for the child that needs it, it's nice for the parents to not have to worry about a dollar limit now going forward. And it could impact costs, but we don't see a huge spend in that dollar amount for those benefits.
But I'll, I'll take certainly the other side is that here's the state coming up with the menu of insurance coverages, and then employers and employees then shoulder those costs.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes.
Because they prescribe, here's what you will offer, kind of things.
Yes, and you don't have the choice. Any questions on the other benefits before we move on? Alright, um, when we looked at the different options that were available, um, we pulled together, we had a lot at one time, and we've narrowed it down, um, to the three options that you see in front of you. Um, and this is just a high-level overview with the numbers, but the options that we looked at were, what if we kept all of the benefits the same, didn't change anything? Um, that's an option A, and you'll see that that's the ten and a half percent increase, um, across the board. Orange County and schools is picking up about, is picking up ten and a half percent of that, um, and the employees are picking up right at ten point one percent. Um, so it's split fairly evenly, no change to the plans. Option B, what you'll see is, um, we have looked at eliminating the Healthkeepers twenty-twenty plan, that's the HMO plan with no deductible. Seventy-four percent of the population is enrolled in that plan, and so by taking away the plan that has no deductible and shifting those employees, um, they have the choice to pick plans, but we've essentially moved them into the next most likely plan, um, which would be the five hundred dollar deductible plan, they will now have a deductible that applies to certain things. And so the cost for that plan is a little bit less for Orange, and it's less for the employees. And so you'll see here.
Except for the five hundred dollars deductible thing.
Correct, so they are taking on, they're taking on more deductible costs, but the premium cost is going down.
Understand, but the premium costs are going down, how much?
You, you moved which cup the, uh, eggs under?
Well, the, the deductible, if I understand, Carrie, was for inpatient stays.
Yes.
This isn't outpatient, this isn't co-pays for office.
It's anything attached to a hospital, basically, so emergency room, inpatient. Um, if it's an outpatient at the hospital, it can apply to that deductible. But anything at the doctor's office, um, for a specialist or a primary care physician, urgent care, for example, that does not apply to the deductible.
Okay, so it only applies going into the emergency room or into the hospital?
So the big cost items, um, and so that is kind of where, um, you know, there's some give and take.
People have to decide whether they need to go to the ER or go to the, they call, if they call the ambulance, that's decisions made.
If they're calling the ambulance, yes, they don't have much of a choice, but there are lots of scenarios where, um, it may not be life-threatening that employees can either utilize an urgent care facility, they can use a primary care.
There are a lot of times the ambulance takes people to the hospital that could, could go to the urgent care.
Yes, usually, if you're calling the ambulance, you're gonna end up at the hospital, and it's a significant cost. Any, anything attached to the hospital is going to increase the cost of care significantly, so we need people to get the care that they need, but we wanna encourage them to get it at the correct place. And by having a deductible in place, that, that's helping guide them to some degree because
Yeah.
they're more incentivized, because now they have a deductible, they have to think about that.
So for most people, they would see a decrease. It's just those few that are ending up in the ER or in the hospital will see an additional five hundred.
Right.
Okay.
Kind of talk, then we also have the flexible spending accounts that can be used pre-tax for, uh, those out-of-pocket deductibles as well.
Right. Um, so that's option B, um, that reduces the increase to about six point one percent for Orange and four point four percent for the employees, it averages out to about five point seven percent overall. Um, the last option C, um, we're also looking at eliminating that five hundred dollar deductible plan under the HMO product. Um, but then we're also looking at changing the Key Care plan, as Glenda mentioned earlier. The Key Care fifteen plan has no deductible today, so we wanna look at shifting that to having a five hundred dollar deductible to match the HMO plan that's in place. Um, and I'm gonna talk about some of the differences between those two plans, but the Key Care plan today has, um, about twelve percent of your total in population enrolled in that. We would typically tell you that Key Care is really for, Key Care or the PPO plan, it's a national network. It's great for folks that are traveling a lot, that want access to doctors that are not in Virginia. But your Healthkeepers HMO network that is Virginia-based is excellent with Anthem. All of the hospitals in the area are in that network, um, there are more significant discounts with the Healthkeepers plan. And what that means to employees is that they're paying less for their services when they have to pay that deductible. Um, and for you as the employer, Orange County and schools, the claim cost is less, and so when that claim is getting paid for the same procedure, if they're on the Healthkeepers plan versus the Key Care plan, it's just much less expensive under the Healthkeepers because the discounts are better. That contract with Anthem, um, saves a significant amount of money. And so you have a considerable, a considerably large population, um, based on how good the network is in that area, enrolled in that plan. And so the idea is to maintain that plan, to have the five hundred dollar deductible like you have on the other base Healthkeepers plan. It keeps it on par with each other, instead of having that be the richest or the, um, perceived best benefit from employees. Keeping things on par and having a deductible really engages employees in having, um, a little bit more consumerism in their healthcare. And so that's why we looked at changing that plan. You will see that the overall increase goes to five point four percent. For Orange, the cost is the same because you make your contribution independent of that plan. So we don't, um, as an employer, we don't mind which plan they picked because we have a consistent, um, contribution amount. But you'll see the employees' amount go down to two and a half percent overall increase, and that's because the cost of that Key Care twenty-five plan is less expensive than the cost of the Key Care fifteen, so those employees are saving some money, um, since they are taking on the deductible.
Does the, is the five hundred dollar deductible apply the same way, it's just hospital or emergency room, or is it a different?
Mm-hmm, so I've done a little comparison on the next slide, just to show you what some of the differences are, um, under that plan. Um, it does introduce the five hundred dollar deductible for an individual, it's a thousand dollars for family.
Can you back up for a second?
Uh-huh.
Not real smart. Where is the reduction for an employee that you keep speaking about?
For what they actually are paying, um, well, the reduction from the actual renewal. So all of the plans.
It's not a reduction, it's, it's an increase from what they're currently paying.
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, yes.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that, because the way, right, the way you were saying, you kept saying that there's gonna be a de- decrease for some employees, and I wasn't seeing.
And there is a decrease for some employees, because anyone that is in, so just looking at all the plans that are offered, anyone that's in the plan with no deductible on the Healthkeepers platform, anyone that's on that plan today that's shifting into the five hundred dollar deductible option will see a reduction in cost because they're shifting into a plan that now is less expensive than what they were on before. And your contribution is now based on that five hundred dollar deductible plan. So they will have a little bit of a decrease, um, I think I had, I may have just mailed that dollar amount to you.
While, while she's looking that up, one, one of the things that got me a little confused is that Healthkeepers HMO stays. That, that plan is not eliminated, I know we referenced Carrie on that, eliminating the, it's just that type of Healthkeepers goes to a twenty-twenty-five hundred instead of a twenty-twenty-zero.
Right. Right, and you have the twenty-twenty-five hundred today, so that's not going away, it's the twenty-twenty-zero.
Right, so the HMO and PPO, those plans still stay, it's just this out-of-pocket deductible that now, uh, everybody will have for a hospital-associated trip here.
So, do, do I understand correctly that there will, under this recommendation, there will be no zero deductible plan?
Correct.
Okay.
That's probably, yeah, yes.
So to give you just a sample, today, employee plus spouse, under the no deductible Healthkeepers plan, is paying six hundred and thirty-six dollars per month for that, it would move to six hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay, it wouldn't move to that, it would change to that. They're not having a savings because they're not being offered what they're currently being offered.
Right.
Uh, the reason this is so important is when we have employees come up, I don't wanna feed them a bunch of bull.
Right.
I wanna be able to factually tell them, yes, you are losing a benefit.
Correct.
And that, that's very important because that's something that I get approached on a regular basis from employees about is the reduction in benefit, and that, I, I don't wanna tell them one thing and have it be something else.
Right, the no deductible plan is going away, and that would be the takeaway, what they pay for the new plan
Is less.
would be less than what they're paying today for the better plan.
If they don't get sick, they save money.
Ex- right.
Absolutely, that's.
Or if they don't go to the hospital, they save money.
No, if they, if they just, if, if they, if they're not.
No, if they, if they just, if, if they, if they're not going to the hospital, they end up saving.
Right.
But if they go to the hospital, they're gonna end up paying five hundred dollars more.
Or another way of looking at it is if they kept everything the same, they would be paying ten percent more.
Understood, but I just, but that's, that's not an option.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
They don't have the option of paying ten percent more to get, to get the same benefit, we've taken that away.
Well, they would if we, if we went with option A.
That's right, but we also pay ten percent more.
That's true. Mm-hmm.
Well, everybody pays them.
Yeah.
And not that you all want to do what everyone else around you is doing, but just from a benchmarking perspective, most counties and school systems in the general Charlottesville, Richmond, kind of merging in-between area, most of them have plans with deductibles, um, and we, out of the client base that I work with, you all are the last group that I have that I work with that has two plans or any plans with no deductible at all.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily mean that you don't wanna do that, but it is something that we're seeing more. That five hundred dollar deductible is almost starting to go away and we're seeing the thousand dollar deductible become more prominent. So we're not there yet, but the idea is to have more employees engaged in a plan with deductibles while they aren't always going to see the benefit of that if they're utilizing that benefit. Um, it is a cost measure that helps manage costs for you and the employees, um, when they are using those benefits.
What, what about spouses that are employable or that are, have?
We, um, actually.
Insurance available from others?
Yes, um, so, um, just, so we're all on the same page, uh, a lot of employers in the area have started looking at, um, or have put in place, um, the, either a spousal surcharge if the spouse has access to, um, insurance that is deemed okay by the Affordable Care Act essentially, or just saying you cannot be covered if you have access to other coverage. Um, we looked at that this year as an option, um, you have some employees that are enrolled as employee plus spouse, but it wasn't something we were ready to go down the path of this year. It's something that we wanna continue to evaluate though, um, as you have counterparts that are doing it more and more.
You say that if the spouse has a, uh, has another, is it access to another insurance plan, they gotta take it, you won't cover it?
Mm-hmm. Correct, so you, you have as an employer, the ability to say, only for spouses, you can't do it for children, um, that if they have access to coverage through an employer, that they cannot be covered under your plan here. So it does not apply to like a stay-at-home spouse, but it would apply to anyone that's actively at work and has access to an affordable plan that's deemed okay by the Affordable Care Act.
Anecdotally, anecdotally, we saw an uptick in our insured population on the spousal side in the city of Charlottesville, UVA, and Alamo County moved to no spouses insured. So, some of those spouses actually migrated off of those plans because their, their, their relations worked in those entities and they were insured under our plan. So, we've already seen that, uh, kinda this trend starting to happen in local government. Private sector's been there for already for a couple of years.
They've been pushing, pushing the, the, uh, beneficiary off to a other, a different, uh, a different payer or a different, uh.
The spouse.
Right. And I will say, Orange is a little bit ahead of the curve when it comes to, um, your contribution to spouses or dependent tiers. You make a very minimal contribution to those, it's about five percent or less, um, whereas some of your other counterparts are maybe doing more. And so it makes it more incentivizing for a spouse to be on that plan, whereas your plan, if they wanna be on it, they can, but they're having to pay the full cost to cover that spouse.
Car- Carrie, on that point, as far as, and, and, you know, one of the challenges we have with recruitment and retention
Mm-hmm.
and having our health insurance plan be competitive with others. I know you shared this with the Benefits Committee, but the trend is actually now moving pretty quickly to where we are.
Yes.
So, what, if we were at a competitive disadvantage arguably,
Mm-hmm.
that competitive disadvantage is, is, is actually going away as each benefit year advances.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Yeah, particularly when we're looking at municipalities and school systems, where just, the funds aren't there anymore to cover, um, as much as they have in the past for spouses or children, and so they're very quickly migrating to minimizing that contribution or it being completely eliminated. Um, and so you all have had that in place for a while, and so like Brian said, it's gonna catch up pretty quickly, that now it's more the norm of what you all are doing. Um, so just to talk a little bit more about the differences between the Key Care fifteen and the twenty-five plan, um, like I said before, we're introducing a five hundred dollar deductible for an individual, a thousand dollars for family. Um, to clarify on that, anytime we say family, um, the individual is protected at any individual amounts. Um, so if you had two people covered, one person's never gonna pay more than the individual amount. So if I have family coverage and I have a hospital stay, my deductible is still five hundred dollars, it's not a thousand.
Even if one of their child's have to go to the hospital.
Right, exactly, so if my child goes to the hospital, they have a five hundred dollar deductible. I have my five hundred deduct- deductible when I go to the hospital, but if my husband goes, he's not gonna have to meet that deductible, because the two of us have already met it and the total is a thousand. And that's what's in place today, that's not changing.
I see, okay.
So you do get that.
Five hundred per person of one thousand.
Mm-hmm. Family, yep. And then, um, the out-of-pocket maximum goes up slightly to four thousand, um, for an individual, eight thousand for family. The co-pays at the primary care go from fifteen to twenty-five, and at the specialist from thirty to fifty. And urgent care goes from thirty to fifty. And, um, as a note, patient first and prime care are both considered, um, primary care physicians, even though they're in urgent care facility. Um, so they're only paying the twenty-five dollar copay, um, for those services still. Then you'll see, um, outpatient services, um, moves from a hundred and fifty dollar copay plus twenty percent of the charge to twenty percent after the deductible's been met. So that five hundred dollar deductible, then twenty percent of the charges.
So that's picking up those, uh, those initial fees in outpatient emergency room.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and emergency room, um, we go from a two hundred dollar copay plus twenty percent to twenty percent after the deductible. So once the deductible's been at one time over the course of the year, that's it, and then they just pay twenty percent of the remaining charges. And then you'll see the out-of-network benefits listed here, um, there is an increase in the out-of-network benefits. We see less than one percent of the population using out-of-network providers. Um, so it's typically not something that impacts, um, a large number of employees, but if they did utilize those benefits, it's a separate deductible of a seven hundred and fifty dollars for an individual or fifteen hundred for family. They pay forty percent coinsurance until they meet the separate out-of-pocket maximum of fifty-five hundred dollars for an individual or eleven thousand for family. So it, it's truly encouraging folks to utilize in-network benefits, but those are the, the changes between the plans, um, that we saw for that. So the recommendation of the Benefit Committee, which as Glenda said, consists of, um, individuals from the county, um, social services, as well as the school board administration or the school administration staff, is to continue with Anthem, change our current plan designs where we are, um, moving everyone from the twenty twenty no deductible plan, um, into the twenty twenty five hundred plan. We're moving the Key Care fifteen to the Key Care twenty-five. And then the twenty twenty five hundred dollar deductible plan and high deductible health plan with a three thousand dollar deductible, those plans would not be changing. And so ultimately, the folks that are in that no deductible plan, they really have the choice to pick any of the options. We've made a little bit of an assumption that they would move into the five hundred, cause it's most like what they have, but they could save more money by moving into the high deductible health plan if they wanted to do that. And then the goal is to educate employees on that change with, at open enrollment, to let them know about those, um, three plan designs, um, during the month of August is typically when we do open enrollment to talk about that.
Word of advice, when you educate them, do not tell them that they're going to be saving money. Educate them that they are losing one plan and moving into one that has a.
Yeah, I agree, and it's, it's really a balance, I mean, when we're talking to employees, it's a little bit of a different conversation. Um, what we really wanna show them, to some degree, we're talking about, it could have been a ten and a half percent increase overall and most of the time, they don't really care, cause they're faced with the three plans and you've taken this one plan away. But the idea is, we're trying to help your cost as well, and I agree, the one plan's going away.
I fully understand, I, we have someone from the sheriff's office here, that I guarantee you, three quarters or more of his people, you tell them that they're going to be saving money, she's not gonna wanna be in that room, it's like.
If I'm in there, she's not gonna want to be.
Exactly, so, I, just make sure that you lay it out to them in a little different manner, because, um,
Yeah, we're, you, when we say we're saving money, we're saving money on the, on the ten percent increase.
Right, right, and that's.
Exactly.
Well, we, we're having a two and a half percent increase instead of a ten percent increase.
Yeah, right.
That's, that's the accurate way of saying it.
And if we were in a fully insured plan, we may be looking at
Twenty percent.
A twenty percent increase.
Right.
I, I think one of the things that, that at least goes, and, and absolutely, Mr. Roger, we're talking about more money and, uh, Chief Deputy and I have had these conversations. If we can slow the curve, it's about cost containment, and that's, that's, I think, if we're going to have some overarching goal, it really is, what are the choices that contains cost for the employee and for, for the county? Because we all know the physics of this is that the, the line is going, the slope is positive, if they're only going to increase.
Mm-hmm.
Especially when you get mandated increases in the coverage.
And we're a much better position self-insured to be able to use various techniques to slow that, that increase down. If we were fully insured, it's, you know.
These rates would be another four to six percent higher, just because of the taxes that you would have to pay for having a fully insured plan, because you're self-insured, you avoid them, which is a huge benefit to being self-insured for a group your size, cause it adds up very quickly.
Well, that's another one, I hadn't thought of.
Mm-hmm.
Well, but the real change is that, that you're sharing some of the risk as opposed to asking the insurance company to take it all, and they're willing to take it.
Right.
But.
But they make money on it.
But you pay for it, you, you pay them dearly to take that risk. Yeah, I mean, I, I've got friends in the private sector, they're, they're talking about, you know, forty, forty-eight percent increases.
I've got one that I'm delivering next week, that's forty-five percent, and they're a big group, they're about four hundred employees, and so that's the biggest one I've had this year, but guess what, we're evaluating self-funding, because it's, it's not always the right fit, but it's something that you wanna look at, and I think we're on the right path with that. We just wanna make sure that we're pricing things appropriately for the plans that are being offered, so that you have enough in your reserves to help offset increases in the future, because by maintaining a lot of these costs for employees, um, and sharing some of those increases, what you're doing is building up that fund so that it becomes more mature. And so in a year that we do have a bigger increase.
Let's just hope the, uh, the twelve, uh, over fifty thousand is the norm, not the twenty-one.
Yeah, and historically, you all have, because we've worked with you for a long time, and so we've got that data, and that tends to be more your norm. This year is just a little higher, and most groups have that, that's what happens every.
At least it was the norm for the past.
Yes, well, that's true, that's true.
And it, it couldn't be worse, I mean, what I, what I have at work, it went from three eighty to five sixty, forty-some percent increase, and the deductible went from five hundred to a thousand dollars.
Right.
And they got rid of a bunch of stuff, and all the co-pays went up too, so, this, this isn't as bad as it could be.
I, I mean, one thing when you're, when you're evaluating this, you have to realize that, that, that last year is last year. And just like we can't buy a new car for what we could buy a new car for ten years ago, uh, I mean, what we're talking about is going forward. So when we, when, when, when phrases like saving money, we're talking about moving forward, you can do this plan or you can save money and do this plan, but that doesn't mean that you're saving money over what you paid in, in, you know, in two thousand.
That's right, when you save, when you say you're saving money, the curve looks like this to this, it's not going from this to this.
Yeah. Right.
Right.
Well, it's the delivery of it, that, that's my concern, is that the delivery of it is educational for the employees.
Well, I think, I think the first thing you say to all employees is that the costs are going up.
Oh, that, that's not, uh.
And that covers it, costs are going up. And now there are, you could, they could either go like, we says, they can go up like this, or they can go up like that, or they can go up like that.
But they're not gonna go this way.
Yeah, right.
No, they just need to be fully informed, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about, we're saving, we're saving on that ten percent increase, we're not saving.
Correct.
Right, and that's.
Correct.
We, we sound like government budgeting.
Yeah, and, and that's.
Well, but we're not, again, we're not, we're not purchasing last year's insurance again, we're purchasing insurance for the next year.
Yeah, and we don't want it.
Oh. Yep.
Well, and because there are a lot of changes too, just mandated with some of the other things, that we need to make sure employees understand how that's going to work.
I mean, there, there are things that they're getting that they don't have today, uh, and they're going to have some costs that they don't have today.
Yeah.
Most of those things that they're getting are gonna cost.
Well, they, they, they do, all of them.
Yeah, that's.
That's the funny thing about it, you know.
Well, one of the things that
There is no free lunch.
You, you do get the, uh, there's no maximum lifetime benefits, that disappeared.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
It can't be dumped, um.
No pre-injustice conditions.
Right.
That costs.
Yeah.
Lifetime benefit costs.
Keeping children until age twenty.
I mean, they're good things.
Keeping children to twenty-six preventive care.
Everybody has to have a journey together.
Even me.
Give me due, Jim.
My, my rusty old plumbing is, I, I could get pregnant.
We don't wanna go there.
I, I, it, it's one of the things, and this certainly is gonna be how, it's all about communication. I agree, we're not net savings, we're, we're trying to reduce this increase, because to go backwards, I mean, the way we could reduce costs is, 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 is pretty dramatic and a number of localities in Virginia are absolutely moving this way. When you give a fixed sum of X dollars per year, and here are the plans that we offer, and you all figure it out for yourself, because we're only going to commit this much money per employee. That door is open and localities are starting to move this way, so for us to kinda get all these plans and try to figure out, you know, fifty dollar co-pays and all that, some localities, even our size, are not that much larger, just saying, enough with that, we'll get access, and here's a lump sum in the health savings account, and, and you gotta go kinda figure it out on your own.
Well, it, it's not an easy message to communicate, but, but in reality, we are using our purchasing power to try to get the employees a better deal than they could get if they were out buying, and let me show you somebody who's buying insurance retail. You know, our purcha-, so we're trying to use that purchasing power to get them as good a deal as we can.
Mm-hmm.
It's still in the great deal, because costs are going up, and, and there's a lot of mandated coverages and all sorts of things, uh.
And for your employees, you still have plans that are offered at the twenty dollars that they have today. So, that's one thing, we haven't passed on any increase to the employee-only piece, the plan is changed.
Right.
But, but their cost, like what they're paying is staying constant, and so that's something that you're not able to say, and that was the case last year too.
Do you have, of, of our eight hundred or whatever employees, do, do you have an idea of how many of those are employee-only versus spouse and employee versus family? I mean, I'm just trying to get a, a sense of what the distribution looks like.
Um.
Oh, is it?
I think it is in some of the, uh, tables at the end.
Oh, okay, I haven't gotten.
Something like eighty percent resonates with me there.
Yeah, I wanna say, um, it's about eighty percent. You've got a very minimal amount of enrollment in the other tiers. So, spouse, child, or children or family, the enrollment there is just not that high, particularly at the county or at social services, the school has more enrolled in those plans. Um, in the county in your packet, it's kind of, it's kind of reddish-orange, that first, uh, three columns or four columns. I saw someone with one of the spreadsheets.
The gray is, is the school, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it's.
So for the employee-only population, most of them are getting no change in the price, the benefit is changing, but there's no change in the price. Um, and those on the Key Care plan are actually seeing a reduction for the employee-only piece.
That's eighty percent of all, all insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Are not, the other twenty percent are in these families, spouses. Are, no, the other twenty percent are in these family, spouse, and that, out of eight hundred employees.
Um, one of the other things we wanted to talk about was long-term strategy. We were talking specifically about two thousand and fifteen's renewal, um, but we have, as a benefits committee, really been working to, um, make out a plan for the next three to five years, so that we really do have a strategic plan in place, um, and a map, more or less, to follow, um, that can be adjusted as needed, but it really gives us some guidance, and some of those things that we're working on are continuing to encourage consumerism, um, from the employees by offering plans with deductibles, benchmarking against your, um, other localities that you're competing against for employees to make sure that your offerings are competitive and the contributions that you're paying for them are competitive. Um, we also are evaluating your reinsurance, um, vendors and specific stop-loss amounts. We did an evaluation, for example, this year, just to see if the appropriate risk controls were in place, or if you could get a better price by increasing some of those deductibles. And this year, it wasn't worth kind of what you would've saved to do that, but we're going to continue to do that, to evaluate it, because it may make sense in future years. We're also monitoring healthcare reform requirements, making sure that, um, Orange is really following all of those rules and complying with those. We are also interested in having, um, committee participation from the county and school board, uh, members, um, in that benefits committee group. And so that is something, we'll have more to come, but I was at the school board earlier, and so I will propose it to you all to think about who you may wanna have a representative, so that you do have a voice at that table when we're going through the process, and you're kind of with us throughout that whole process, and hearing about some of that strategic, um, piece, because it does help, I, I found with other counties, it's really helpful to have a representative from the board to kinda help convey some of those messages as well. Um, so more to come on that, but we are eager to have a volunteer for that committee. Um, and then also, um, introducing, um, more wellness initiatives. Um, we're really at the beginning piece of this, um, because we are now self-funded, the health of your employees really does matter. We want to keep the healthy employees healthy, and we want to help those that maybe aren't as healthy either get healthier or get them the help that they need to maintain their health. And so part of that, um, you know, we're looking at identifying kind of what the top issues are within the group, doing some targeted communications, um, encouraging employees to participate, but then really moving forward and looking at doing biometric screening, so employees know their numbers. A lot of employees don't, um, when it comes to blood pressure or cholesterol and things like that. And the idea is to get them more engaged in their health, um, and to create an atmosphere here at the workplace that encourages that wellness, um, so that they're not only healthy, but they're happy at work, it increases the morale. Um, and so we're working on, on really that, and the idea is that if we have support from the top down, that that really helps create an environment, and so we're working towards that, we're at the beginning stages right now, and it is something we're gonna work on over time, it's not going to be an immediate. You know, we have this huge wellness plan, it's something we really wanna be strategic about, and make sure employees are gonna be engaged in that long term.
Yeah, speaking of that, are you, are you seeing very many, uh, I know private, the private sector, they do this quite a bit, in, in local government particularly, um, where they're making a, in effect, they're charging premiums for certain behaviors.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we have several, um, municipalities that, um, have started doing it, are looking at doing it. We discussed it this year, we wanna make sure we have a strategic plan in place before we roll something like that out, but it's becoming more of the norm, and it tends to be, you know, these are the rates, and if you participate, you'll, um, get a reduction in that rate, and there can be for any number of things, it can just be completing a health risk assessment online. It could be going to the biometric screening, it could be.
I'm talking about negative.
Tobacco use.
Tobacco use.
Well, you can't, so, it's a tricky thing, you cannot word it as a negative. Um, it has to be worded as, if you were a, anyone's paying this rate, but if you comply and you participate in the tobacco cessation program, then you'll see a reduction. You can't say that we're gonna charge you more because you use tobacco products, and it's a wording thing.
So you gotta raise your base rate and then bring it down for all the good guys.
It's a wording thing, but it's, um, it's being heavily mandated by the government, we're seeing lots of changes. That's part of the other reason for a little bit of a delay in rolling it out, um, because there's, a lot of the stuff is being evaluated by, um, the government to make sure it complies with ADA rules and things like that. So we're waiting on some of the things to come out, but as a whole, you're able to do that. Um, we haven't seen very many get to the point where it's actually outcome-based, so where we say, your BMI was this, and now you have to lower it five points. And if you don't lower it five points, you're gonna pay more. We haven't seen it get that far yet with most of our counties and municipalities, everyone's still in the beginning stages.
We had a pretty vigorous conversation around this, uh, Superintendent and myself and all of us. We're all very much attuned that we need to go there. Uh, we anecdotally threw out some things, uh, one of the, one of the folks that was there, uh, is insured through Dominion Virginia Power through North安. And if they felt, filled out a health screening online, they realized a fifty or a hundred and fifty dollar deduction just for a twenty-minute survey online over their ta- total annual premium. There's nothing to prohibit us from doing those same kind of things. Um, with the tobacco cessation, um, there's a friend of mine that works for Reva, they had a special for thirty-five days. If you said you had four servings of vegetables, you got twenty dollars off your monthly premium. A- a- and that's kind of where it's going, I mean, that, that seems a little extreme, but the fact that we're self-insured, we can, we can, can work on that. And, and the other thing I'll add to the county and the school board, as you know, we've got a master plan, high school master plan committee between the two bodies, we saw, uh, Dr. Tanner and I saw this as, as a ready, another group, uh, besides capital facilities to work on this. Because one of the, one of the things that we'll probably have to get our arms around sooner or later is the schools right now have an employee-only program where the employee pays nothing out of their pocket for the monthly premium. And if we were able to change that to mirror what the county employee only, uh, is, we would realize a significant, significant savings in our overall insurance costs. So as a budget, we're just gonna have to start working ourselves that way, and she's, she's willing now, kind of, to help start the conversation.
And I think that's also.
So I need to start talking to my school board rep?
I was gonna say, she's got a school board that doesn't support that, though.
Well.
Yeah, well, and I think that's part of having a school board member is part of the discussion as well, as well as you all as a board member, because those are things that come up and we talk about, and hearing it here is helpful, but sometimes it's nice to be part of the whole process and hear kind of some of the other ideas that are in the room about why we would consider that and, or how we've gotten to this point, um. So, uh, you know, most of your enrollment is from the schools, so it's a, like Brian said, it would be a significant change in the pricing.
Well, you, you also have a difference in terms of part-time employees, I mean, there, there are certain categories of part-time employees that without coverage, there are others that have coverage, and, and so in terms of a long-term strategy, finding some reasonable.
Right. Right, and you've gotta keep it in check with what your other competitors are doing for employees, because you don't wanna lose all of your bus drivers, because now they're paying too much for their benefit, and that's really the reason that they're at work. Um, so those are things that we'll be working on over time, um, but we did wanna, I guess, stress that we've got a lot of things that we're working on now to really help us in the future, so that we are maintaining costs as much as possible. Um, and very quickly, the other benefits, this is very easy. Uh, the dental insurance through Delta Dental, we have no increase for the upcoming year, so we're recommending to renew with them, um, with no change to the plan designs or contributions. The vision, we're also able to renew with IMED for another four years at no increase. The employees pay that full-fledged, you do contribute to the dental plan, but, um, employees pay the full cost of the vision, and that rate hasn't increased in the last five years, so, I, it's pretty nice.
Just a side note on that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they've done something this year where if you have to get a diabetic eye exam, it cannot be done the same day as your regular eye exam, so you end up paying additional money to go back in and have the same thing done with one additional test.
From the medical insurance?
The, the, the vision insurance.
Oh, this vision insurance.
Right, it's the craziest thing I've ever seen, but what you're doing is you're paying, I think, forty dollars more for what you used to be able to do in one visit.
Right.
You cannot even do the visit on the same day as two separate appointments, you have to go two separate days.
Hmm.
So.
Where, and that is what, IMED's requirement?
Well, there's, so your medical insurance provides a medical benefit for things like diabetic check or glaucoma, medical conditions of the eye.
Okay, so.
So that's one separate benefit, but usually, you're able to go.
In the past.
So, in the past, so they've changed that. So I may, um, if you wouldn't mind me investigating a little bit further, because my curiosity is, uh, piqued a little bit.
Actually, not at all.
I'll give you my card, and if you wanna email me your information, I would like to check into it, just because that's a change from what we've seen in the past.
Right.
That's so stupid.
Yes, it absolutely is.
And that seems, yeah, like a waste of your time to have to go multiple times.
Yep. And as well as the eye doctors.
Right, so I'll give you my card before I go, so I can check into that for you. Um, the flexible spending account, um, a small change to that, that employees can now put aside two thousand, two hundred, five hundred and fifty dollars instead of two thousand five hundred dollars this year. And what you're paying for the administrative fee is reducing from five dollars and thirty-five cents per participant per month to five dollars per participant per month, so we were able to secure a reduction in that cost. And then the employee assistance program, it was new last year, or for this current plan year, um, and so we'll be entering the second year of a three-year rate guarantee, so that is not changing. Um, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from employees, um, on that program, so it seems to be going well. And then the work site benefits, um, that's the accident program through Transamerica, there's no increase to that benefit. And so the action items for the June ninth meeting would be, the recommendations are to move the medical plan to option C, um, with the employer contributions maintaining for the employee only at twenty dollars, and at zero dollars for the schools, and then sharing the increase equally with the other tiers. Um, and then for the dental and the other plans, renewing, um, more or less as is, with the same contributions that you have in place today. Any other questions?
Thank you, Carrie, that was a very good presentation.
Thank you all for your time, I know insurance isn't always the most exciting thing. Uh, trust me, I work in it all day, every day, but it is a big expense item that you all are kind of tasked to help manage, and we appreciate, I, I appreciate the engagement and the questions, 'cause it makes it, um, more interesting, I guess, for us to know that you care a lot about, you know, what's going into place for your employees, um, and is managing the plan. So I thank you for your time, and I'm gonna get you my card, so I can check into that for you.
Couple of housekeeping things, one, uh, we'll come back at, at some point, not too distant, come back at some point after Dr. Tanner and I scope out what this, uh, benefits committee's kind of charter would be, and, and kind of a work program over this next fiscal, uh, year. Um, the other thing is, is I've asked Carrie, um, now that all of our, our local market, all, our other employers in the region municipal have starting their new plans, and those are being communicated out, is to go out and survey and see where we stand as best as we can go through, and as you can see, it gets pretty complicated pretty quickly when you're trying to compare apples to oranges to bananas. Uh, but I've asked her to benchmark us against where we, where our other, uh, market, uh, labor market, uh, localities are, see where we are, at least trying to better inform ourselves, because we will be making the same kind of decisions again next year.
Okay.
So we'll have this as an action item for the June ninth meeting.
All right.
All right, great, well, thank you all so much.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on the informational items? Okay, do we have any appointments to boards, commissions, or committees? Okay, uh, calendar, we have to schedule a public hearing for the SUP fifteen oh one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's gonna be delayed, uh, the, um, Community Department Historic Resources had an objection, so the FCC is requiring that the, uh, community wireless, who's the applicant, has to get together with, uh, DHR and work out a memo of understanding, and so it's probably gonna be a delay of six months or so while they're doing it.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to schedule that. Uh, nothing else on the calendar, I'll, except a motion.